Should we go ahead and get started? If everybody will have a seat, we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to apologize, we're about five minutes behind schedule. We have a pretty large agenda today, and it took a lot of time in our pre-meeting to go I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Trenton Maggott, David Roseacher, Jeffrey Moore, Michael Pate, Patrick Morris, Christine Carnes, our Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Sherry Rockwell, Acting Assistant Planning Director, Eric England, Planning Manager, Mike Carter, Planning Board Administrator, Jennifer Taylor from the City Law Department, and Lisa Agins, our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us, they're just right down here. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information, and try not to repeat what has previously been said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cellphones at this time, if you would. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so they are made a part of the public record. The Planning Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. Re-zoning matters are an exception to this rule. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found on the northeast wall of this room. And there are no changes to the consent agenda, so I will get started with reading the consent There it is. Okay, Agenda Item Number Six. Case C-10-18-277, C-12-18-278. Applicant: 204th Street LLC, Attention, Mark Allen. It is on consent for approval. Request: Revised Preliminary Platte Approval of Town Center West, a subdivision outside the city limits with waivers to Section 53-99 sidewalks and Section 53-82B cul-de-sac length, along with rezoning from AG to MU, and final platte approval of Town Center West, lots 1 through 5 and outlots A and B, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to MU. This was laid over from our December meeting. Location is northwest of 204th Street and West Center Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seven. Case C-10-18-247, C-12-18-248. Applicant: Blondo 180 LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary platte approval of Blue Stem Meadows, a subdivision located outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R4, R6, and MU. This was laid over from the November meeting. Location: Northwest of 180th and Blondo Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? You do, sir? Okay. It'll be removed, and it'll be heard.
Hold on for a second, sir. I really don't understand what I'm asking you of when I say removed consent. So if you could explain that a little bit, would that be great?
It's on the agenda for approval.
Yes, I would like to add that.
And that'll be heard in its regular order, sir. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Nine. Case C-14-18-138. Applicant: Planning Board. It is on consent for approval. Request: Vacation of the East-West Alley west of 44th Street between Wakely and Davenport Street. This was laid over from our November meeting. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Agenda Item Number Fifteen. Case C-10-18-134, C-12-18-135. Applicant: Omnicorp Saddle Creek LLC. It is on consent for approval. Request: Preliminary and final platte approval of Poppleton Park Replat III, a minor platte inside the city limits with a waiver of Section 53-84A lot depth, along with rezoning from R3 and GC to R5 and CC, along with approval of an MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. This was also laid over from our November meeting. The location: Northeast of Saddle Creek Road and Davenport Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Sixteen. Case C-10-18-271, C-12-18-272. Applicant: Scott Iverson. It is on consent for approval. Request: Final platte approval of Evergreen Acres, a subdivision located outside the city limits with a waiver to Section 53-84D lot frontage, along with rezoning from AG to DR. Location: Southwest of 132nd and Bennington Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty. Case C-10-19-8, C-12-19-9. Applicant: South Farm LLC, Jeffrey A. Silver. It is on consent for approval. The request: Preliminary and final platte approval of South Farm Replat II, a minor platte outside the city limits with rezoning from R4 and MU to R4 and MU. Location: Southwest of 144th and Pacific Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda Item Number Twenty-One. Case C-11-9-143, C-12-19-13. Applicant: Tim Holland. It is on consent for approval. Request: Preliminary and final platte approval of Holland Hilltop Edition, a minor platte inside the city limits with a waiver of Section 53-84A lot depth, along with a repeal of a PUD Plan Unit Development Overlay District. The location is 209 South 49th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three. Case C-10-19-17, C-12-19-18. Applicant: Falcone Land Company. It is on consent for approval. Request: Preliminary and final platte approval of Spruce 180 Replat I with rezoning from AG and R4 to R4. The location is southeast of 181st and Spencer Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Moving on, Agenda Item Number Twenty-four. Case C-10-19-10. Applicant: Joe Kosecki. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from DR to R5. Location: 6027 Home Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Moving on. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Five. Case C-10-19-11. Applicant: Steve Z. with Pinnacle Bank. It's on consent for approval. Request: Rezoning from LO and CC to CC along with expansion of the ACI-265 Overlay District. Property is located within an ACI-265 Overlay District. The location is 8040 West Dodge Road and 8319 Chicago Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Six. C-11-19-12. Applicant: Tim Holland. It's on consent for approval. Request: Approval of a PUR Plan Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location: 209 South 49th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-seven. Case C-11-19-16. Applicant: Omnicorp Saddle Creek LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a PUR Plan Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location: Northeast of Saddle Creek Road and Davenport Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-eight. Case C-8-19-19. Applicant: American Tower. It is on consent for layover. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow broadcast tower in a DS District. Location: 1804 Paul Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none, I'll move on. Agenda Item Number Twenty-nine. Case C-8-19-20. Applicant: Merlin Minjivar. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow daycare services general in an HI District. Location: 2221 Washington Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Agenda Item Number Thirty. Case C-8-19-21. Applicant: Schlossberg Company. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow General Office, Consumer Convenience Services, General Retail Sales, Personal Services, and Restaurant Limited in a R7 District. Property is located within a PUD Plan Unit Development Overlay District and a Flood Fringe Overlay District. Location: 1919 Papillion Parkway. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Finally, Agenda Item Number Thirty-two. Case C-7-90-108. Applicant: Malfreezen Community Bible Church. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in a R3 District. Location: Southwest of 90th and Q Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none, those are the cases. We'll entertain a motion for those cases on consent for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I approve of items, Agenda Items Number Six, Nine, Fifteen, Sixteen, Twenty, Twenty-One, Twenty-Three, Twenty-four, Twenty-five, Twenty-six, Twenty-seven, Twenty-nine, and Thirty.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
I move for layover of Agenda Items Number Twenty-eight and Thirty-two.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Those cases on consent are done for the day. If you want to stick around and watch the proceedings, you are welcome to, or you are free to leave if you came for one of those cases. We'll get started with the Agenda Item Number One. The first three cases are administrative cases only, meaning there is no opportunity for a public testimony. Agenda Item Number One is Case C-10-18-31, C-12-18-32. Applicant: Jerry Torzon, Richland Homes. Request: Final platte approval of Chestnut Hills, lots 1 through 106, and outlots A through C, formerly Hunsecker, a subdivision outside the city limit with rezoning from AG to R4. Location: Northwest of Kilpatrick Parkway and State Street. May we hear from the city?
Sure. This is recommendation for approval of first phase of final platte, about 28 acres in size, 106 single-family residential lots and three outlots. You had previously seen, a few months ago, Chestnut Hills came before you for the entire development. They've decided to break that up into two phases, so they have come back before us. Final platte is just for that first phase only. City recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4. Approval of the final platte subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council.
Any questions, comments, motion?
I move approval of the rezoning from AG to R4, and approval of the final platte subject to the submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda Item Number Two. Case C-10-18-211, C-12-18-212. Applicant is Ryan Lindquist, Elkhorn Public Schools. Request: Final platte approval of Ida Point North, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. Location is southwest of 180th and Ida Streets. May we hear from the city? Eric?
Sure. This preliminary platte in variance to the PDZ Present Development Zone was approved by City Council on November 20, 2018. This development will allow for a future elementary and middle school within Elkhorn Public Schools. There still need to be further coordination as far as the recording of the adjacent Woodbrook platte, or for this development to provide for provisions of dedication and paving of Purple Mart and Parkway prior to the platte recording. That being said, City recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4. Approval of the final platte subject to the conditions of preliminary platte approval, submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement, and submittal of updated mylar prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
Any comments, questions, or a motion?
I move for approval of the rezoning from AG to R4, and approval of the final platte subject to the conditions of preliminary platte approval, submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement, and submittal of updated mylar correcting the street name prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And the final case on administrative only is Agenda Item Number Three. Case C-10-18-240, C-12-18-241. Applicant: Lauren Johnson, Celebrity Homes, Omaha. Request: Final platte approval of Woodbrook West, lots 1 through 32 and outlot A, formerly Sagewood Ridge, a subdivision outside the city limits with a rezoning from AG to R4. Location: Northwest of 180th and Fort Street. Eric, may we hear from the city?
Yeah, so this is the first phase of Woodbrook West, formerly Sagewood Ridge. It's for 32 single-family residential lots and one outlot. The preliminary platte and variance to the present development zone was approved yesterday at City Council. This is immediately south of our last case, Agenda Item Number Two, for the school site. City recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4. Approval of the final platte subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council.
Okay. Any comments, questions, motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning from AG to R4, and the approval of the final platte subject to the submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on. Agenda Item Number Four. Case C-8-18-51, C-12-17-210. Applicant: Orchard Valley Inc., Melvin Sudbeck. Request: Preliminary platte approval of Aloys Acres, a subdivision outside the city limit with a waiver of Section 53-99 sidewalks, along with approval of a special use permit to allow development in the Edie North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. This was laid over from our November meeting. Location: Southeast of 66th and Garvin Street. We will hear from the applicant, Jim Lang. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Rosenbaum, members of the Omaha Planning Board. My name is Jim Lang. I'm an attorney at 13340 California Street. I represent the applicant, in this case Orchard Valley Inc. The principal and the applicant is Melvin Sudbeck. Also with me today is Don Heine, the project engineer from Thompson, Gresen and Dorner. Our request today is preliminary platte approval of Aloys Acres with a waiver of the sidewalk requirement, which is Section 53-99, along with approval of the special use permit to allow development in the North Hills Environmental Overlay District. The zoning on this particular piece is DR. We're not asking for rezoning, so it's going to continue at DR because it's comparable with the...
Sorry, Jim, if you could flip your site planning around, is the lighting...
Oh.
Yep. Thanks. Sorry.
There you go. It just fell off of there, Jim.
I learned pretty quick here. Thank you. Size is, location is southeast of 66th and Garvin Streets, just south of Interstate 680 on about 66th Street. Size of the project is 21.9 acres. Density, what we're asking for is to divide 14 lots, 14 parcels into 14 single-family residential lots. And these lots will be ranged from about one acre to two acres. The average density is 1.5 acres, 1.5 lots, excuse me, 1.5 acres per lot is the average density of the development. Give you history on the development and the application. This has been going through the city for about a year. This first started out... We made an application for 19 lots. And basically, I'm working with the city planning department through the last nine months because this is an overlay district, and we're addressing the natural features in the area. The applicant has reduced the number of lots from 19 to 17 in our application. The recommendation of the planning department is for 14. We're agreeable to that recommendation to subdivide 14 lots, so we're consistent with the planning department's recommendation. And where those 14 lots, so we reduced it from 19 lots to 14. And where the reduction in lots occurred was on the south side in this particular area, up here to the west, southwest area of the proposed subdivision. These four lots were originally proposed. Those have now been reduced to two lots, so those lots are about two acres each. Moving to the east and basically to the southeast, we initially proposed four lots in this area. That has been reduced to two lots, and those lots are about two acres as well. We also, this lot here in the northeast corner is an outlot. It's no longer a buildable lot. So the applicant has gone and working with the planning department to address the natural features in the area, has reduced the number of single-family lots from 19 to 14. If you look at the surrounding... If you look at the surrounding area, and I think this... If you look at the surrounding area and the compatibility of this development as far as lot sizes with the area that it's in, if you go to the, to the east, here's I-680 to the east, these particular lots to the east, they range from, they're existing, they've been there for quite a while. They range from about 1 acre to 3 acres, and then as you go to the west, you have like a 3 acre lot.
Give that a turn, is that 680 and that is... To the north of your subdivision, correct?
Yes.
You want to give that just a slight turn?
To here, there we go. Here we go.
Turn your exhibit.
Right there.
Screen's froze? Okay. Well...
It's north.
It's north.
Interstate's north.
We got you then, all right.
Yeah, right here, this area here, is to the north.
We can't...
680 to the north.
There you go.
These particular lots have been developed, and you can see the various lot sizes to the north there. Once again, they range in that area about 1 acre, 2 to 3 acres. And these, there's not really a, a pattern of development in this area. It's developed over a long period of time, and this is kind of the first new development type project that's been in this particular area for a while. But the size of the lots that we're proposing at 1.5 acres are consistent with the lots that are there now. There are some larger lots, there are some at 1 acre as well. And as you go to the north, there, that's the 1 acre lots there. If you go to our lots, here on our north side, that's where our 1 acre lots are. If you go to the southern portion of our proposed development, that's where we have the 2 acre lots. So, we believe the compatibility and densities are compatible with what's out there now. And concerning what's low density and high density, as you know, R1, that's low density. Low density is about 20,000 square feet minimum, that's about a half acre. DR, the minimum, is 1 acre. We comply with that as well. So, these certainly are not, these are very much low-density type, single-family subdivision lots. Put this back here if I can, that works again. Okay, referring to the recommendation report of the planning department, planning department has recommended once again that we reduce the 2, the basically 8 lots on the southern side of the development to 4 lots. We're agreeable to doing that. That brings the number of lots down to 14. And that's really the minimum number of lots that developer can utilize in this particular development because he's putting in the public street that goes through the project, plus the rest of the infrastructure. And in order for the development to be successful financially, the minimum of 14 lots is really the minimum number of lots that is required to make this a financial successful development. Concerning the recommendation report, the recommendation report does state what the conditions and the modifications recommended in the development, the recommendation report, that the project does meet the goals of the master plan and meets the requirements of the overlay district. And I think another item, I think, to point out, I remember years ago, the city planning department was really, really pushing for development in this particular area. There hasn't been a lot of development. This particular area is within the interstate loop, and the master plan has always encouraged development within the interstate loop. Kind of an infill area, you have the existing infrastructure, so this type of development really should be welcome in this particular area. The type of housing we're looking at here is probably 350 to $500,000 homes with the size of lots there. So, it's going to be a nice development, and it's going to be an asset to the area. Once again, referring to the recommendation report, there are 16 conditions for approval of the preliminary plat. Those conditions are acceptable with the applicant. There are two conditions relative to the approval of the special use permit. Those two conditions are also acceptable to the applicant. Once again, this particular project meets the requirements of the DR zoning jurisdiction, meets the requirements of the master plan, and we're requesting approval of this particular project so we can move forward with the preliminary plat and the special use permit. If I could, if there's any, anyone talks or speaks in opposition, I'd like to have the right to rebut for a couple minutes as well. If you have any questions, myself and Don Heine are here. Once again, we're asking approval of the preliminary plat and the special use permit for this particular development. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Okay, if you, if you're going to speak, you can come down and maybe sit in the front row because that might help speed things along, or be ready to go. Make sure you give your name and address, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Andy Melville. I live at 8720 North 60th Street. For reference, this is a aerial shot. The proposed property that we're talking about is highlighted in red, if you can see that. I live here in this property, and I need to make some corrections to what the applicant mentioned there. I'll just highlight the size of lots, its actual density out there. My property here is 39.8 acres. The two properties immediately east of the proposed area are 5.7 acres each. The property directly south is 6 acres, I believe. And you can look at that sizing all around here. It's not 1 or 1.5, 2 acres that the applicant had indicated earlier. So, here today, there's, basically, there's a representation of over 33 individuals that own the 307 acres surrounding this property. We strongly oppose this development as the way it is currently proposed. As you can see, this is a rural area. The density is much lighter, more acres per residence than, than what has been told earlier. Up until the most recent recommendation report from the planning committee, we did agree with the planning department's review and how they had pointed out many things that didn't comply with the master plan and the elements. However, this current recommendation of approval for this proposal, in our opinion, is not consistent with, nor carries out the goals and objectives of the master plan. We're concerned about degrading, tree canopy removal, lot density, and light pollution. As you know, part of this request is for a special use permit developed in the North Hills Environmental Overlay District. With that, that permit shouldn't be given without full faith and confidence that the applicant can fulfill that. Unfortunately, in a nearby subdivision, this is Northern Hills Estates 3. There's been three different versions of Northern Hills Estates. It's approximately a mile north of the development that we're talking about today. There was a special use permit given for development in the North Hills Overlay area, and there's been some problems with it. I just want to highlight that quickly for you. This is a 2013 picture from Douglas County GIS showing as at that time, farmland, grassland, treed areas. If we move on to 2017, after the permit is given, now this is in the environmental, in the special permit area, you'll notice extensive grading has gone on. Removal of trees has occurred within the lot areas. 2018, we look a little closer, and the whole reason that the environmental area special permit is required is to reduce erosion, protect the natural resources. Here, this is from a satellite photo, you can see deep ravines already forming for erosion. And if you look down in the corner here, there, this is a, black line is a silt fence, part of the remediation, trying to keep soil from moving off. You'll notice a flow coming out of that, and if you actually zoom in, a large amount of dirt, in this, in this case, it was 40 by 50 area, has actually flowed out of the erosion control containment area. So, in my opinion, I am a professional civil engineer, so I have a little bit of background in this. That does not meet with the special permit requirements that are being requested here today. If we zoom in a little more, this is Plum Street to the east end of the development, you can notice severe erosion here. For reference, this is a vehicle compared to the size of what is being eroded away. This is in the Los Hills. Very, the silty loam soil is easily washed away without some type of ground cover, whether that be trees or grasses, however. So, as you can see, we have concerns whether this applicant is going to be able to control and properly perform his duties. What's interesting is the developer builder that is requesting this is also involved in that Northern Hills addition. So, that's the major home builder in that area. So, that, that causes us deep concern. Excuse me, so we are concerned that they're not going to protect our unique area from careless development. Once it is gone, you just can't fix that. So, along with some of our other concerns with the steep slopes, part of the requirement of the master plan is any grading on slopes of, steep slopes has to be less than 20% of the total project. The applicant originally came in, as he said, they, they wanted more lots than that they were proposing now. When they started out, they're at 38% of the steeper slopes are going to be affected. They had to be forced to get down to the 20%, which is one of the rules. And that, that 20%, so they're down to 19% now, however, it is noted, as you probably saw in the recommendation, that the amounts that they have calculated does not include anything related to how the, the graded areas are going to be contoured out to the existing slopes. So, it's a very steep side hills with deep ravines. If you're going to build a house there, you have to have an envelope of buildable area around it. Well, as of right now, they just assume that they're straight walls up and down from where they graded out. There is no adjustment or grading calculation for the total slopes that are being affected. So, we actually believe the number is greater than 20% and that the grading doesn't comply with the special use permit. So, basically, in summary, most of the issues with this proposed development stem from it being a high-density, they, he may have explained it as a lower density before, but as you saw on that drawing, there's a lot bigger lots, acres around there compared to what they're proposing. That in itself is not consistent with the master plan. And another issue of critical importance with this rural area is the elimination of light pollution. One of the reasons we live there and we've invested a lot of money is the dark skies, the rural area. In this case, we're requesting that the board require the developer to comply with a waiver to remove street lighting. This would be consistent with previous board approvals of multiple developments within the Northern Hills area. Some examples of those would be Northern Hills Estates Development 1, 2, and 3, the Mill at Timber Creek Development, Country Club, Replat 5 at 60th and State. Those are some examples where street lighting was removed and sidewalks were removed. We do agree with the applicant as far as the removal of sidewalks, being a rural area that isn't really, it's not conducive, and it reduces the grading on these steep slopes. So, with that, the neighborhood is interested to find a compromise, something where the land can be developed. We're not opposed to development. However, we want to make sure all the different requirements are correctly taken and, and that the permits are given only after everything has been, excuse me, everything has been vetted out and ensured that it's going to be compliant. I guess with that...
Sure, how many lots would you recommend?
In our opinion?
Yeah.
Four to six lots. There's 23 odd acres, if you, if, on that previous map that you saw, averages are probably 6 acres around there. There are some further on Garvin Street, further to the east, there's 1 and 2 acre lots. Those are a small area, but primarily around the surrounding area. Four to six would fit in nicely with the current use of the land.
How long have you owned that land, the 39 acres?
20 years. It's not 40 acres.
Has there ever been a sign for sale, or have you known, this is the subject property ever been up for sale in the past?
Yeah, so it was up for sale for, I believe, about one day. One or two days. Some of us actually were interested in contacting real estate agents. One of our neighbors who's not here actually put in a bid for it, and he lost out on that bid. So, there, there was interest in the neighborhood to try to control that land.
Just leave it green space, or?
No, probably allow several residents, something like that. Maybe split it up into four and four, 6 acre acreage or something like that.
Thank you.
So, that would be your compromise?
Thank you.
That, excuse me, that would be your compromise for...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That would be your compromise? Because you indicated you would like to try and find some way to...
Sure, he asked for what's the ideal. I would say four or, 4, 6 acre acreages, five, 4 and 1/2 acre acreages. That's my opinion. I guess I'm standing, standing for some of these other residents.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Andy. Any other opponents?
Yes.
Andy covered a lot of information there, so if you have new information, it would be appreciated.
Yes, I will do that.
Okay.
Appreciate it. My name is Tim McGill, and I reside at 6060 Country Club Oaks Place, just to the south of this development. I also own a parcel of land that is just to the south of this development. I'm not going to repeat anything that Andy said. I stand behind a lot of what Andy just said and would have made the same points. I'll skip past that and speak to my relative experience.
Okay.
I own 60 acres of land right here. It's this entire parcel from 66th and State to 60th and State.
Tim, do you want to turn that? It looks like you're north. There you go.
That, yeah, there you go.
Okay.
So, here's the development right here, and we own, myself and two other partners, we own the 60 acres right here.
Okay.
From 66th and State to 60th and State on the north side. We bought that back in 2009, became very, very familiar with the North Hills Overlay District, the parameters that you must design within to build on that property, understand the master plan of the city of Omaha, had our concerns as to whether in buying this parcel, we could put 3 homes on it. That was our, our intention when we were looking at it as developer. Those 3 homes are going to begin construction this year. There will be 3 homes put on 60 acres of land, and very much time and effort was put into the design and the positioning of those 3 homes to protect the steep sloping embankments, to make sure we're not taking down a very mature tree canopy. We put in all the utilities last year, water, gas, electricity got put in right when we bought the property. All these utilities had to be bored in, there needed to be special considerations to what would happen to the tree canopy if we open cut those utilities when we put in. We have not disrupted the tree canopy in any way, shape, or form. We are not going to disrupt the steep sloping embankments. Our property in itself, the elevation change from the high point to the low point is 109 feet. It's a unique area. There is very mature tree canopy, there is extremely unique to this area, sloping embankments, ravines, there's creek that runs through ours. When we were looking to put these 3 homes on it, we were concerned as to whether that would fit in with the neighborhood. We set up a meeting during our due diligence with the neighborhood to make sure that our development would, would suit the needs of the area, and everybody was in favor of it. I thought our neighborhood was great in supporting us as developer. I would be proof that it is sustainable to reduce the amount of, of lots. We're 60 acres, 3 lots. One of the homes that is going to be built is myself, and the other 2 homes are the other 2 developers that brought it. Obviously, there are people out there that would take a piece of land like this and put it to what the neighborhood would consider to be a very proper use and a very welcome use. This does not meet what we feel the master plan for the city of Omaha is. It does not meet what we feel the requirements of the North Hills Overlay District are, and if those get violated when somebody comes in and does the project, you can't take that back. You can't ever take that back. The city, the area will be changed forever. We don't want to see the area changed forever. It's a gem for this city. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Very briefly.
Okay.
And I won't cover anything.
Name and address, please, yeah, thank you.
Hello, I'm Tom Showmaker. I live at 8877 North 66, which is immediately south, we share the border with this proposal. I live with my wife, Lori Ekelbe, right along, this is the south part of the land. We have 6 acres. So, we've got 6, he's got 40, he's got... he's got 60. When we're going to put one acre things in, in the middle of all that, it doesn't fit. It isn't the character of the neighborhood. That's our objection. We tried to do something about it. We weren't fast enough, I guess. One of the previous proposals by the mover here shows these little trees. Well, there's a zillion trees out there, and we want to keep them. This is where we live. And the master plan tells us, and this is the Bible for everybody, the new development of housing should be consistent with the character of older neighborhoods. This is our whole argument. This is not consistent. This property here would make sense a half mile away where there's lots of land available and homes in a much greater density. This would fit in fine. There's nothing wrong with this. It's just it's in the middle of a donut hole of rural development, and we're urbanizing and changing forever the development we live in. And the last point I have for you is another quotation from the master plan, your Bible, what you are to follow. Emphasis will be placed on the modification of development proposals to accommodate and protect natural features rather than the other way around. And that's where we've got it backwards here. We are trying to cram in as many homes to make it economically feasible, and that's not the test. If it isn't feasible economically, well, maybe that's just too bad, because that isn't the test. If, what should happen here is a natural development of this property, and it should be couple of, three, four, five, six larger acreages that would fit in and fit the character of our, we call it peaceful valley. That's where we live. It's interesting, there's a lot of opponents, 100% of opponents. There's not one proponent to speak in favor of this project, other than my brother attorney here, who has been hired to speak. Please give these things your consideration. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
No.
Done? Were you coming up, or?
Um.
Okay. We'll cut it off at that then. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Jim Lang, would you come up and do you want to address?
Yes, just briefly.
Any of the points made by?
Just briefly here. I would like to have Don Heiney address what he has, the work he's done with the city planning department here in the last several months, just briefly with addressing the natural features and what he's done there, if I can.
Okay.
Don Heiney, Thompson, Dreesen, Dorner. Part of the uniqueness of this site is the features that are out there. It is an open area for the, predominantly, one of the prior speakers talked about the 60 acre site, which has the streams and the significant tree canopy on it. This site doesn't have any streams. The big feature that we are dealing with here is the slope of the property. In our grading plan, we have dealt with the planning department. We are minimizing the amount of grading that we're doing with the street that's coming through. We're limiting the amount of trees that are being removed. One of the things we have done is had an arborist come out and look at the trees. A significant number of the trees that are out there are of very low quality or are dead. We're still planning on maintaining all of those trees as we can. One of the comments was in regards to disturbance of the, in excess of 17% slope, and we're at 19%. Want to point out that in that calculation, we have used a building footprint of 80 by 100 feet. That's an envelope that we're looking at maybe disturbing up to that amount, but not outside of that. So, that grading that he talked about around the homes that would need to occur could occur in that 80, 80 by 100 footprint. 80 by 100, that's an 8,000 square foot home. We're not going to be putting it anywhere near that size home out there. It allows us the flexibility to cite the homes in a manner that will disturb the minimum amount of area within that 80 by 100 foot footprint. Other than that, some of the things that are a little different about this site that some of the other sites don't have, there is a significant overhead power line that runs along the north side of the property that encumbers a large area along Garvin Street. You do have views of the interstate through this property. It all slopes in a manner that you'll be able to, from the majority of the lots, see that interstate view. So, it isn't quite, doesn't quite have the nature that some of these other properties have. So, from that standpoint, the developer has looked at, because of those reasons, what size home will fit in here and be consistent with the master plan. I think we are at a point now with the 14 lots that we meet that. With that, I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Don. Any questions for Don? Any comments?
I have a question. When was the last time you met with the neighbors about the development?
The neighbors we're met with, I believe it was last February. It's been almost a year. We've been in the process of working with the planning department, and until, you know, we kept getting recommendations that didn't move us forward, so we didn't feel it was prudent to meet with the neighbors, until we did have a plan that the planning department was supportive of. Now, we do have a plan that they are supportive of.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Jim, I called you up earlier, and did you want to reclaim some of your time?
Just briefly. I think some of the comments that the property owners have made are good comments. There are natural features here, and we are addressing those things because we're in the overlay district. If you look at the recommendation report from the planning department, the, many of the items that the property owners have addressed are addressed in the recommendation report of the planning department, and we intend to address those and comply with the master plan. So, we are addressing the slope issue. We are addressing the natural features. We have a tree canopy plan. We are addressing all of these things pursuant to the master plan and addressing the concerns of the property owners here. And I guess maybe it gets down to density and compatibility. We feel that we're very compatible, especially with the properties to the north. As you go from the interstate to the properties to north, and then you go to the south, this is kind of like a transitional area. Okay. So, you have the properties to the north by the interstate. They're like one to two acres. You have our property. We get to one and a half to two acres. Then you go to the south, and they get larger. It's probably a good transitional type of a sizing of the lot area as well. And once again, you know, when does 1.1, 1.5 acre lots, when are those not low density? So, we're asking your support. And once again, we're always open to meet with the neighbors. We haven't met recently because we just got the recommendation report on Monday. So, we're always willing to meet and work with the neighbors on this project today and moving forward. So, we're requesting your support on the preliminary plat and special use permit.
Jim, I have just one hypothetical question.
Sure.
If you meet with the neighbors, and the neighbors make an offer to reclaim that property, I know you're speaking for the developer. Do you think the developer would entertain such a?
You know, I don't know. I don't know. That issue hasn't come up, so.
As long as it offers reasonable.
Yeah. I, you know, I guess any offer's worth considering, depending on what the offer is, certainly. But that's something, you know, I can fizzle with my client about.
Okay. Thanks.
Jim, just one more thing. Between you and Don, you've addressed most of what Andy, Tom, and Tim had to say, but Andy did bring up the light pollution. Do you want to address anything about light pollution?
No, we'd be agreeable to waiving if we need to. Eric, do we need, if under the ordinance, we need to waive the requirement for streetlights, we'd certainly be agreeable to that. First time this has come up to my knowledge, but.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
We'd be agreeable to that.
Any further comments, questions from the board before we hear from Eric?
Eric, in your comments, if you address, you know, as Jim said, that, you know, one to two acre lots are not small lots by most neighborhood standards. I think Omaha's done a really good job in the last 10 years of growing up and redeveloping areas and things like that, both commercially and residentially. I see the need for larger lots and things like that, and I understand the neighbor's position here. Is this the right place to have five acre lots, or are there other places that are more suited to that? And my other concern would be on the stress it puts on fire, rescue, infrastructure, and things like that when you have less dense neighborhoods. So, if you could kind of incorporate that in all your other comments, that'd be great.
Eric, may we hear the, from the city?
Sure.
If you want to address some of the items that have been brought up.
Obviously, this area is, and I apologize for my voice. Hopefully, it stays with me, fighting a cold off, so I'll be more raspy as we go on. But this area is in the North Hills Overlay District, which means that standard development with sewers, your normal densities, 5,000 square foot lots would not be supported. So, this is an appropriate place for acreage residential lots. That's, you know, that's the primary use that we would see in these areas, and we are supportive of those developments, provided they can comply with the zoning regulations, the subdivision regulations, and the master plan. You know, density is relative. The existing zoning is DR, which does require a minimum of one acre in lot size. That doesn't mean that you can necessarily maximize your land and just have straight one acre lots, because there are other factors that need to be considered, such as this site. There are, there is a lot of, you know, a lot of steep slopes, and the grades are a challenge. So, you know, this 22 acre site, it wouldn't be feasible to have 22 one acre lots. And, you know, I know that the developer, we've been meeting on this for well over a year, probably 15, 16 months, and we've seen many revisions, modifications. I know, you know, as Jim mentioned, they did start with a higher number of lots. I believe it was 19. And, you know, we've worked down to their submittal of 16 lots, and we are recommending to reduce two more lots to 14 lots. So, based on our analysis of the slopes analysis, the tree coverage plan, we are acceptable to the development with those 14 lots. Yes, I understand some of the other surrounding properties are larger than that, but, you know, we have different types of housing throughout our, you know, very large jurisdiction, and, you know, it's not just, you know, whatever is next to you. It's not necessarily, you know, how it continues. There would never be any change if that was the case. So, you know, I understand that the neighbors consider this high density, but on the whole scope of things, it is very low density. I mean, we see many cases and later cases that have, you know, 1,500 square foot lot sizes. And I know it's a different context and a different part of our jurisdiction. I'm not saying that that would be appropriate here by any means. But it's true, we have worked with the development team on several changes, modifications. They have improved, you know, their impacts or non-impact on the steep slopes on the site. And, you know, we are supportive based on the conditions in your recommendation report. I guess I'll touch briefly on the street lights. We have not had that discussion as far as not, or waiving the street lights. Chapter 53, the subdivision code does require street lighting. There are parameters set. There is also a waiver for sidewalks. We would not be supportive of both waiving sidewalks and street lights. That issue has come up with other acreage lot developments, and we believe that people walking in the street, because there's no sidewalks, and there's, or there's no sidewalks, and then there's no street lights, is a potential dangerous situation. So, we would not support both of those. We are supportive of the sidewalk waiver, because that is what is before us, and that is common in the North Hills Overlay District. Like I said, we haven't had the discussion for street lights. We can always have those conversations, but that would, that would have an impact on the sidewalks, and we would have to, would have to look at a proposed plan. There is some further refinement that will be needed as far as the tree mitigation plan. We want the development to be able to keep as many trees as possible. You know, even if they are scrub trees, as you would call them, they do serve a purpose regarding erosion and preventing erosion. You know, Andy touched on a different site. I don't know a lot of particulars about that, but, you know, we always have to be careful in the North Hills Overlay. I don't know if I have anything else that you want me to address. Unless there's any further questions, I would make our recommendation, which is approval of the waiver of Section 5399 sidewalks, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 16 conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the special use permit subject to the two conditions in the recommendation report prior to forwarding into city council.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. Any additional comments or questions, or a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the waiver of Section 5399 sidewalks, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 16 conditions listed in the department's recommendation report, and approval of the special use permit subject to the following conditions, the two conditions listed prior to forwarding to the city council.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Karns? No. And I say that because I am concerned about the tree canopy analysis and mitigation plan and the grading plan. I would like to see those a little more advanced before approval of the preliminary plat, but I will watch, should this motion succeed, I will watch closely for that before approving the final plat.
Okay.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved, six to one.
Thank you, folks, for coming down. We're going to move on to agenda item number five, and we'll take five and 31 together. Is that correct, Eric?
Congratulations, but we're not happy.
Yes.
Okay.
We don't want any light out there. We do not want any light.
Just a second, Sean, and I'll.
I don't know why it has to be.
Okay. Agenda item number five is KC 12-18-268. Applicant Sean Negus, request preliminary and final plat approval of Stone Arch Creek, a subdivision located outside the city limits with waivers to Section 53-8-4D lot frontage, Section 5393, street surfacing, and Section 53-99 sidewalks. Property is located in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. This was laid over from our December meeting. Location is 13909 North 64th Plaza. And I'll read case 31 here, since we're taking them both together. Agenda item number 31, KC 8-19-22. Applicant Sean Negus, request approval of a special use permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. Location, 13909 North 64th Plaza. May we hear from the applicant?
Sean Negus, currently still homeless, but residing in my friend's basement at 408 Sunset Drive, Fort Calhoun, Nebraska. So, I'm asking to consider these waivers so that I can potentially build sooner than later and move out of the basement. My property is located approximately one mile north of Northern Hills Drive, and North 64th Plaza is a, it's a private easement for property owners to get to their property, not a city dedicated street. The neighbors in the area do not want paving, do not want a sidewalk up here. It's country living. I actually have a signed petition by everybody in the neighborhood stating that they would not, they would prefer not to have this. And it says, "We, the neighbors around 13909 North 64th Plaza hereby proclaim our support for the Negus family to build a single residence on said property. We are not in favor of a paved road nor sidewalks in our area. North 64th Plaza is an easement for our acreage houses that is strictly private and not a city dedicated street. We enjoy our country living and nature surrounding us, and believe that a paved street does not fit our chosen lifestyle."
not fit our chosen lifestyle. Our area was divided in 1982 by way of meets and bounds legal descriptions, which was completely legal at the time by the Tripp family as acreages, and was never intended to be a city style of living. Paving this is unnecessary expense and would be the essential road to nowhere, since there is a mile of gravel that precedes this property. Please take this into consideration when casting your votes to allow this property to become built upon." And then I actually received, there's technically six property owners, plus my property is seven, and I got 10 out of 10 signatures from dual household people, I guess you should say. No, I was unable till like 11 o'clock today to get ahold of one of the neighbors, and I have an email stating that she would have supported Ann sign it if I could have met her in time. So, and I can give you guys this, submit this to you guys.
You can bring it forward. Thank you, Sean.
Do you guys have any questions for me at all?
Any questions, comments for Sean?
I have a couple, I have Don Zeisler here with me again. And also, sorry.
Randy Woodward.
Randy Woodward, sorry, also, and they are here to speak as well on my behalf.
Sean, I'm going to make a comment. We talked about this quite a bit up in the pre-meeting. Agree with a lot of what you had to say in your petition that you had and everything, and it's kind of like, okay, you got a lot of gravel road and then a paved street. Sometimes when you're not looking at the big picture, that doesn't make any sense at all to have that. The big picture is, is what's going to happen five years from now, 10 years, 20 years from now? And if there's any further development, any sale of a lot, and somebody divides that up, and one big lot into four or five lots or something. One thing, well, there's a lot of things that you can say about the planning department that are positive, and one thing that is really positive is they try to stay consistent with any time somebody's developing a piece of, a piece of ground. As much as this doesn't make sense, it is consistent with what the city planning department does with everybody. And unfortunately, for you, it's, it's an expensive, consistent policy, but it is a policy that they worry about, what do we do down the road? When is it going to be, if, if you don't pave that portion of your property, when do we make the next person pave their, if they subdivide their lot into four or five lots? When do we make them pave it? And so on, all the way down to the south to a paved road. So that's my comment. It doesn't make a lot of sense, only from the aspect of down the road and future development. And we have to start someplace, and that someplace is on your piece of property right now.
So, and I completely understand, you know, future development, stuff like that. I mean, this property is two and a half miles north of the city limits. It's within a half mile of the city, of the Douglas County border to Washington County. The Tripp family are the property owners that abut mine on the entire west side. I would essentially have to get them to even allow me to put paving on their property, because half of this would go on their property, which they're not in support of whatsoever. I mean, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of issues. The neighbor to the south, I mean, just build a brand new house. So the chances of him ever subdividing that property in the next 20 to 30 years from now is absolutely nil, I would say. This is actually his dad sitting here before you, and, I mean, he could probably attest that they're probably not going to, because they want the country living feel. Everybody that is up there wants the country living feel. It's not, it's not your typical urban style of neighborhood. So, I, I mean, as I do understand the city's master plan and how, how development needs to occur on a regular basis, I don't think that this truly fits the same criteria as something inner-city. And it's, if it was closer to something that, that it would make sense to connect to, I would say, I would agree with that, but I just, I don't know. I guess I feel like I would be the one that would be kind of being responsible to do, be the starter of something that probably will never get done in a minimum of 20, 30 years, I would say. And then will the street need to be replaced in 20 to 30 years from now? That's, I guess that's my biggest point, so.
Okay. Did you want to say anything else, Sean?
I think that's pretty much all I have.
Are there any other?
Ask a question.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Thank you. You mentioned that, you think your neighbor just bought or built a house to the south?
Yeah, brand new house, just moved in in June.
Okay, so then I would have the, what's that? So that's the one that was already, was exempt from, okay.
It's a shed, though.
Oh, it's a shed.
25 years, what'd you say, 35 years ago?
That got grandfathered down.
35 years ago? He built the shed on it?
Yeah, I understand, because the only, only way that that stretch of road in front of their property, that street would have to be developed is if they tore everything down, lost their billable rights, and then built something new.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't know it was just a shed, so.
Eric will address those points, too.
Okay, thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Come forward, sir, give your name and address, please.
My name's Don Zeisler, and I live at 13303 North 64th Plaza, which is just south of where Sean proposes to build that. And he pretty much covered everything, so there's not much left to say there, other than this development is not going any further, because North 64th Street basically can't go any further. I mean, Joe Archer owns the whole north, north end of all the properties up there. So that's about all I got to say.
All right, thank you, Don. Sir, if you wanted to come forward, give your name and address.
My name is Randy Woodward. I live at 1758 South 105th Street. But I bought that property almost 40 years ago, when it was being split up into 10 acre lots. I didn't build a house on there, because I was distracted somehow or other, but I sold it to my daughter this spring, and she immediately built this house. The layout of this is a private road that has a county road that goes up to it. The county road is gravel, it doesn't look like there's anything going on there either. But the road along here, 64th Plaza, is on the top of a ridge. It drops off quickly. There's a very little area that you could build another house on, because the slope is so steep there. So on my 10 acres, there's only about two, maybe two and a half acres that you could, is flat enough to build a house. My daughter has one right in the middle of this, and she's not going to sell anything anyplace for 50 years, or I don't know however long she's going to be there, but I think there's very little developmental potential there. So I would say that having a requirement to build sidewalks and streets is worthless. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Randy. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Seeing, and I'll close the public hearing. Before we hear from Eric, any additional comments, questions?
Just so we understand, if I understand right, the road, the gravel road to his house, they're asking him to pave, just goes to his house and won't, won't extend beyond his house, correct?
Just, go ahead, Eric.
So they are requesting a waiver of the street surfacing section to not provide the standard improvement or street, okay? The city is recommending denial of that waiver, and saying that the development along the western edge of this site would have to improve a street. Now, we do support, considering this is the North Hills Overlay, we do support no curb and gutter, a reduction in street width to 22 feet, and, you know, the maximum cul-de-sac length. So we are, you know, we are supporting a reduction of those requirements, which is common for the North Hills. But we are saying that along the entire western stretch of the property would have to put in a street. Now, currently, there is, well, so that would still need to be worked out. There is currently, it's basically a driveway easement that is, you know, gravel. It's called 64th Plaza, but it's not really a street. It's an easement that provides access to these different homes or parcels in the area. If he's not able to obtain permission from other people that are party to that easement, the other option would be to place the outlot entirely on his property where the street would go.
And would he own the street and maintain the street?
Yes, there would have to be a public access easement granted. You know, it kind of works in with that, that other easement. Now, if it's completely on his property, I mean, we'd have to look at what that language includes, but, but yes, it would be personally owned.
Other than his family and his guests, there's no other reason for people to access it, to use this improved road.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, it would be strange to have, you know, the gravel driveway next to a privately owned street, but we would have to work out those details. I mean, that's... So, you know, I, I know it sounds strange, and you talk about, you know, this large site, and that the area will never be redeveloped. Well, I mean, we have consistent meetings when we meet with people, such as our last case, to develop pieces of property. I mean, that was a 22 acre piece in, in the North Hills. And, you know, I know that the neighbors say at this time, they're not going to further subdivide their land or anything like that. Well, I mean, there's large, there's large pieces of adjacent properties that, I mean, could very well come in to split up into more lots. You know, the subdivision code doesn't differentiate whether you're creating one lot or 100 lots about needing to provide those improvements.
What's the minimal lot area in that area for, under the plan?
One acre.
Okay.
So, you know, I mean, I know it's tricky, and, you know, the idea of starting somewhere, you know, a lot of these homes have been out there a long time. The house directly to the south, it, you know, it, it had established building rights based on the building that had been there for a long time, and that's why they were not required to go through the plating process and therefore improve the street.
Sean, did you have something to say? Say your address, please.
I, I do, I'd like to show something on this.
Say your address.
Sean Negus.
I think that your friend who's couch asleep on the basement would, would be here as in support of you.
Yes.
You must be a good house guest or something.
Really great friends of ours, too. Yeah, Sean Negus, 408 Sunset Drive, Fort Calhoun, Nebraska. So, my property, the only place that you could possibly build a house would be the area that we have chosen to build on. It's the only flat area. Everything else, the slopes are, exceed any kind of buildable area within the Northern Hills Overlay District. Also, if you look on this picture, inside that area is all trees and a waterway. There's no way that you would be able to get a waiver to ever remove those trees in that environmental, environmental overlay district. The only possibility for a development to ever exist would be on the west property west of this area, which is owned by the Tripp family, and they have absolutely no interest, as of right now, of doing something like that. Nor do I think I could get them to agree to, to paving on their property. Possibly, I mean, they're, they're nice people, but I, I don't know. It's, this is going to be a $75,000 to $100,000 ordeal by the time we grade it, bring it up to the city standards of 22 foot wide, six inch thick concrete, and it's 760 feet long with a roundabout at the end. I also, that being said, the roundabout that would have to be done would actually, I'd have to remove the gates and the fences that are up there on, on their property, and I don't know that I would ever get anybody to agree to any of that stuff. So this would essentially be just probably, I'd be stuck paving my whole side of my property.
Do you already own the property?
Huh?
You own the property?
Yes.
Is there any issue about fire and rescue if he doesn't pave it?
We did not receive any comments from police or fire in this report.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to continue with your recommendation?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't think I have anything more to add, so I'll give the official recommendation. If you have any further follow-up questions from me, you can ask. The city is recommending denial of the waiver of Section 5393 for street surfacing, denial of the waiver of Section 5384D for lot frontage, approval of the waiver of Section 5399 sidewalks, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the four conditions in the recommendation report, approval of the final plat subject to those conditions of preliminary plat approval and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council. I can...
Do you want to, should we take a vote on five?
Yeah, let's, let's do five, and we come back, circle around for 31.
Do we have a motion?
I'd approve, I'd make a motion to approve, so if I want to approve, then I have to make a motion to approve of the waiver of Section 5384D lot frontage, and, or the, approval of the waiver of Section 5393, street surfacing, approval of the waiver of the Section 5384D lot frontage, and approval...
Hold on. If, if you are recommending approval of those two waivers, then you would have to eliminate conditions number one and two of the preliminary plat, because those are tied directly to improvements, and they contradict those waivers.
Okay.
So, so if you're going down that route, if you're approving all the waivers, eliminate conditions one and two, is what you would have to do.
Okay, and elimination of, to continue, approval of the waiver of...
Trenton, will you start over with your, with your motion?
Do I want to approve the third thing, too? Okay, so, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Approval of the waiver of Section 5393, street surf, street surfacing, approval of the waiver of Section 5384D lot frontage, approval of the waiver of Section 5399 sidewalks, and removal of the preliminary plat, removal of number one and two, under the approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the following conditions, yet keeping three and four. And approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat approval and some, submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to City Council for final action.
Second.
I'm not, before I ask for a vote, I want to make sure we have this, I'm understanding the motion. You're in favor of everything that's been in the recommendation, except for points one and two on the approval of the preliminary plat?
Yeah.
And then changing denial to approval.
And you want to change the denial of the...
Two denials to approvals, and keeping number three and four of the approval of the preliminary plat.
Okay.
Eliminating numbers one and number two, A and B.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
No.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Karnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No.
Motion approved, five to two.
So for agenda item number 31, with the special use permit that is still needed, there are no specific conditions related to the improvement of the street, so the recommendation, as it reads in the report, would stand. The city recommends approval... The city recommends approval subject to the two conditions listed in the recommendation report.
A motion for approval, subject to the two conditions in the recommendation report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, you, will you record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, agenda item number seven. It was on for consent agenda, it was taken off. Case C-10-18-247, C-12-18-248, applicant Blondo 180 LLC, requests preliminary plat approval of Blue Stem Meadows, a subdivision located outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R4, R6, and MU. This was laid over from our November meeting, location northwest of 180th and Blondo Streets. Larry, you're representing the applicant?
I am.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is property that's located on the northwest corner of 180th and Blondo. It's owned by the Mulhalls, and that is the applicant, essentially, Blondo 180 LLC. It's currently zoned ag, and it's a tree farm for their nursery. With me today is a Cal Bowl of E&amp;A Consulting, the consulting engineers on this particular project. By the way, a little history, when, when this was at the November meeting of this board, we actually, it was on consent agenda for approval on, at that meeting as well. We pulled it off because there was two, I think, points in the recommendation report that we need clarification of, so we met with Public Works and Planning, and we cleared out those, what we thought were, you know, concerns. They ended up not being. I think we're going to be able to work through those. So now we come here for you today for the second time on a consent agenda for approval, and we're pulled off for other reasons that we'll find out here in a few minutes. But I don't know that I need to get into a whole lot of, of the merits of the case. If you recall, this is, again, a 74-acre site. It's split virtually in half by what's known as Big Elk Parkway, that connects from 180th to the west. That's up to the north of Big Elk Parkway are 80 single-family residential homes. And then to the south of Big Elk Parkway, again, this is Blondo, 180th Street. We're making accommodation in the plat and dedication for the future relocation and reconfiguration of Blondo Street, as well as the 180th Street viaduct coming over the railroad tracks. So what we have here is five mixed-use lots, and then we have three additional lots that are zoned, or will be zoned, R6. They're the multifamily. On lot 82 here, I think there's 62 units, which is a density of about 11.4 units per acre. And on lot 83, which is a small one here, there are 28 units called for on that. That's a density of about 13.2 units per acre. These are just two-story houses, or two-story apartments. They're essentially the same height as a two-story house in the adjacent residential neighborhood to the west. So then we have 160 units shown here on this particular lot here, and that has a density of about 19.2 units per acre. This is a convenience mixed-use corner at the intersection of 180th and Blondo. It allows for 250 units. These, between the three lots, that it does essentially take the entire capacity of the 250 units. And primarily, it's a good thing because all the other three corners of this particular intersection really are, are not usable. They're either developed, or they're not usable for this mixed-use corner. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, obviously respond to any opposition, and we'll find out why we got pulled off here in a minute. And again, Kyle's here as well to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Okay, any opponents? Come on down, if you would. Name and address, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Eric Olendorf, address 2213 North 183rd Street. I, for picture reference, you had a much nicer picture, by the way. Okay, so I'll try to do that justice. Let's see here, let's flip this around.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's try this.
Give it a turn. There you, you got her now.
Okay, there we go. Now we are professional. My home is right here, for reference. And, and so you're, you're wondering why I asked to pull it, is, is, we live in, in Blondo ridges, and, and I've been asked on behalf of 14 families to come and speak. And we did submit some information on, I, I believe you all should have received it. It was some information about the, the impact to homeowner value. And, and so that's obviously a ma, a major concern that we have with this density and the apartments going in. But I think to speak for, for myself is, this is, this is really a dream come true. Property for us and home for my family. It is, it's a wonderful neighborhood, and, and it, it's kind of everything you could, you could hope for, from having your kids grow up to a serene setting in behind you where you have a setting of, of wonderful landscape trees, and you look out with a serene and peaceful setting. And it's, it's great for, for our kids, too, and it's what we had hoped for when we moved here. That said, I, I don't think we're here to stand in the way of progress and, and impede in the Mulhalls' dream of, of developing their, their property. What we are asking, or what we were, are requesting, though, is, is the proposal they're, they're asking for changes everything I spoke about, simply because of the density and the industrial complex they're asking, or are looking at. And so we'd like for them to think about, and, and for the reasons of, just to step back, the mobility of apartments and dwellers means less stable relationship with neighbors, more traffic, safety and privacy concerns, things that we move there, and, and the reason we want our kids to grow up there. And noise and light pollution, and just removing some intrinsic value of our homes and neighborhoods. So what we would like for them to consider, and for you all to consider as well, is, is how is it possible to improve more green space, first of all, especially in this area right here, and/or provide a, a layer of single-family homes in that area? That's really what we're, we're asking for, to remove some of that density of, of the industrialness behind our, behind our home. So we fully believe the Mulhalls should understand the importance of aesthetics. They, they have a business built on it, and so we're asking them to maybe rethink that, and, and maybe you all would, would, would think about that a little bit more. The last thing I would mention is, you know, I, I look around and I, I try to wonder if maybe our proposal's a little bit out of, out of context. Are we impeding in, in something? And, and we have some friends that live off of Dodge and 144th, where they're doing the, the, the Boys Town. And, and that, that developer offered, you know, probably 50 yards of green space in between the house and there. And so we're obviously not asking for that much, and we know that one of the issues they have here is, you know, the density is, is needed or necessary for, for, you know, making their price per square foot, because they have a pretty serious offset that they need to contend with. But we're, we're trying to ask for something maybe a little bit more in line with, with something like that 144th and Dodge area, where they did offer, that developer offered a pretty good space for their homeowners, and, and obviously respected their willingness to want, not want that industrial complex right in their backyard. Thank you. Any questions for me?
How long, how long have you lived there?
Uh, just over a year, 15 months.
And what did you think was going to be developed on that site?
Uh, you, you know, I think it was naive for me to think that nothing would be developed. I was told it would be some time for my real estate agent before they did develop it.
Don't trust me.
And absolutely, yeah, absolutely learned, learned a lesson there. And, and so that's, that's, that's obviously on me. I think we suspected homes. I know that the developer for our complex tried to purchase this, and, and I think the, the hope was that that would somehow go through and be developed into homes.
From the, from the, the deck line, when they talked about, it looks like there's, there's, how many units are in those two stories? He said they're the same size of houses. It looks like there's probably, what, five?
10.
10 unit, okay, so, so, I mean, that's a nice transitional type of product. From the look of it, that green space between the two multifamily facilities, it's unfortunate that green space couldn't have been in your backyard.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure if they, if they could figure out how to do that, they'd do that, but obviously it's very economically not, not feasible. So, you know, I, I understand your concern, but I also understand the, the functionality of how they, how they designed this.
Sure.
Yeah, but thank you.
Have you met with the developers?
Uh, they did have a meeting one week before the November meeting, and, yeah, it was just an informational meeting. There wasn't really time for question. It was only an hour. We had to exit the building because there was a time confliction, so we didn't get a ton of time to really get into any details or weeds. It was more of just a proposal.
So you didn't go over the suggestion that you just made?
No, we didn't. And obviously, I think from that standpoint, we didn't need, we needed some time to think about, okay, what, what are we really asking for here? I mean, okay, is this okay? Do we, do we want something different? And how do we go about asking? So we didn't, we weren't given that opportunity.
We'll ask the developers also.
Sure.
But it looks like where your lots are, it looks like, if there's any garages or, it looks like you're backing up to green space on those two-story apartments. So it's not like there's going to be, you know, traffic behind your lot, you know?
That would be correct.
That kind of stuff. So it looks, I mean, it looks like they've actually treated you pretty fairly.
If you think 35 feet is fair, I, I, I would disagree with you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
A lot of people disagree with that.
Yeah, well, hey, I, listen, same with me, so don't feel bad.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
Anything else, Eric?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon, board members. I'm Nick Adkins, address 2219 North 183rd Street. Try not to repeat what Eric said. He covered pretty much all of my concerns. I actually live next door to Eric. Yeah, the 35-foot offset directly behind my house is of significant concern. When my wife and I moved there a year ago, we anticipated that within presumably the next five years, that area would be developed. We hoped it would be single-family homes, and we were greatly concerned when we found out that it was going to be planned to be multifamily homes directly behind us. Like I said, we moved there about a year ago. We've got two young kids. I'm in the military, I've been in for 12 years. I've had to move every 18 months since I was 18 years old, as a result of that. We moved to this place because we actually planned on being here for, you know, more than 18 months. Because of our concerns about the increased traffic in the area, you know, people already speed in front of our house, anticipate that would increase with multifamily behind us, as well as concerns with people, you know, moving probably every, what, two years behind us. Because of our safety concerns for our kids, we would likely move again. So again, to, to restate Eric's point, we would ask that potentially the developer change those multifamily homes to either green space or a single family. Next, any questions?
Thank you, Nick. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other opponents that wish to speak?
I've never done this before, so...
That's all right. Name and address, please.
My name is Robin Hanson, and my address is 2407 North 183rd Street. So just to show you on the map, we are right here. This is our house. And so, yes, I, maybe it was naive of us, but when we looked for a house to build, it was a gorgeous area. Our backyard is full of beautiful trees by Mulhalls, and we did not, we were told that that was not going to be developed. And that was also going to be our dream home. I understand that Mulhalls wants to develop this land for financial purposes, as we all do, but we asked, we didn't have enough time at the meeting, but one of the suggestions that I, I had asked was, instead of having, yes, these multiple homes, maybe they could switch these over here and put the single-family homes over here, because, like they were saying, you know, there's, to me, there's issues of, we liked this neighborhood because it was quiet, there weren't a lot of through streets. You can't even get to the next neighborhood just by crossing over. You have to go around through some streets. There's just, there's not a lot of traffic right now for families and children, and the noise level is very quiet. We're worried about the noise level that the apartments will bring, and, you know, just the higher traffic and our property values. I mean, we built that house, and what they're looking at, our property value is very nice. These homes are in the, I think, $375,000 to $500,000. And when you start talking about putting in, you know, a Casey's and, you know, a bunch of apartments, I think that's going to devalue the price of our homes. And so I would, my dream would be to have this left as green space. I understand that they want to develop it, but if they could leave this as green space, that would be my top priority. If not, I would wish that they would consider moving the single-family homes to back up to our homes, because I think that would be more realistic. If we would have known that they were going to move apartments in there, we would have never moved in. I mean, you know, you, you buy a house for a certain purpose, and we bought it because we thought we were going to be in a residential neighborhood. So I think, and, yeah, just to remove all the aesthetics of the trees is disappointing, so...
I guess I'd just like to make a comment to your, we still have someone else who'd like to speak, but in general, your, your comments are roughly the same. And from a municipal development standpoint, you always want to do transitions. You transition from single-family, let's say, acreages, then you, you go to neighborhoods, then you go to low-density multifamily, which is exactly what they have there. And then you go into the apartments, which is in the middle of the project, and at the edge of the project by the major streets, then you have the commercial. And that's just what's always done. It's the best way to do it, so that you don't, you don't end up living behind the grocery store, so to speak. And, and so that is the way, from a planning standpoint, we try to mitigate that in given areas. My personal situation is when you buy a piece of property, you have to be aware of what's going on and do your research, and not everybody knows how to do that, I know. But, I mean, in my situation, I had a house that was similar to that. It was backed up to a farm, but it was within a half mile of a major road. And so I got together with all of our neighbors, and we bought 100 feet from the farmer for the whole length of our subdivision, so that we would have our own buffer, but we provided that, we didn't expect someone else to provide that for us. And that's, that was 35 years ago, and it's still there. And it's got trees and gardens and all kinds of stuff in it. And, but from a municipal standing, stand, or municipal planning standpoint, this is the ideal way to do it, and somebody is going to have that in their backyard. If, if you add another layer of, of single-family in there, then, then they're going to have it in their backyard. So it's, it's just the way it has to be.
Yeah, I think we would just prefer that the single-family, if you have to build something there, put the single-family there, because our residents are already there. Those people would know, and the other development, that this side would be multiple family. So they would already know that that was coming in. We didn't know that. And I, yeah, I guess we don't know how to do research, but before we bought, we did try to research and find out if, you know, there was going to be any development on the property, and we were, we could find nothing, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Robin. Any other opponents? Any other opponents?
I can actually use the little picture. Tammy Campbell, 12472 Evans Street, Omaha. I spoke in November at the meeting a little bit, so I'll make it brief, because I have a better picture here. So, my family has owned a sixty-acre farm that starts here and goes up to about one-hundred-and-eighty-seventh. My property's here, and my sister's gonna speak, his property's here. I already had spoke how the city is going to force, through forced acquisition, take this part of our property behind this creek for part of, when they build that bridge over Blondo Street. I had spoke about the frontal property we're gonna be left with will not be in the green belt anymore. So, it'll be kinda useless if all the mixed development goes over here, okay, what they're talking about. What was brought up in November by the consultant firm is that this isn't big enough. We're working with actually the county appraiser and a personal appraiser to see, because this is actually going to be seven-point-one acres of what's considered dry green belt, unimproved right now, could be possibly made into potential wetland mitigation if it's necessary. But what we're asking is to hold off on this project until we get this appraised, because if it could be potentially commercial, then that gives us an option to sell it or do something with it if that's all we're left with. If the appraisal comes back that, no, it can't be used for that, then we're out of the discussion. But we're just saying we wanna hold off till we find that. The county appraiser is almost done, but they weren't finished looking at the property yet.
And if somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it's the appraisal as much as a use to see how much commercial.
Yes, with the appraiser are also doing that.
Okay.
They're gonna say what it can be used for, because for the city to appraise, or the county to appraise back here, they have to appraise the whole thing, even though they don't want it, but they have to determine exactly what it can be used for.
Right. I mean, the water feature that you have, the creek going through there, obviously, is an impediment and affects the value and what, no matter what.
But that would be gone, because the city is going to acquire everything from that waterway south.
My recommendation would be to talk to an engineer that represents you, have them talk to the city planning to see what, if you give me allotted some commercial property there, and that'll affect your appraisal and your values there. As opposed to, you know, it's one thing if you think that they're taking too much commercial across, there's no commercial allotted for your property.
Yes.
But I would think that having a commercial across the street from your property, as long as you, if it's buildable and you can get some commercial property, it'd probably be worth more to have a zone of commercial around you.
But if this is zoned, mixed use, will that be used up for that corner?
That's what you want that engineer to find out for you.
And that's what we're doing. We're getting our personal one, and we're working with the county one.
I'd have to do that, but I don't necessarily know that we need to hold off on there as well. And maybe we'll answer that through this discussion.
Because I was, had the understanding that if they were approved, it would block out any more commercial area than that.
We'll find out.
We'll get that information for you here.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Any other opponents?
Deborah Campbell, 18727 Blondo. We bought the property, that farm, in nineteen eighty-seven, and I, too, thought I was in my dream home. I've had the OPPD substation put on my property due to all the houses coming up. They wanna take the wetland, or make a wetlands behind that creek area, which is cutting me inch by inch out of there. And as these guys here said, they think all three corners, the other corners, are worthless property. But I think it was mentioned that it may be four feet low on the south side of Blondo Street, west of one-hundred-and-eightieth. But that's not gonna be for long, because I've got all the dirt from the OPPD substation that I personally am going to move down there, and I will raise that up to four feet. So, all we're asking is, and again, we're not trying to stop them from building, it's inevitable, but for them to say that the three corners are worthless is not true as long as, and again, Tam just asked that, and you're gonna clarify it, how much commercial property can go on the corner. So, that's where we're up in the air on, and, you know, if it doesn't affect it, if it possibly can be zoned on our side, on the south side of Blondo, if it can be zoned either possibly commercial or residential. But for now, we just need it held off until we find out these answers.
Show us your property, please.
Okay. Let me grab my glass.
Are you southeast?
Southwest of one-hundred-and-eightieth. Where are we at? Okay, this property right here. Let me see where I can get my bearings here. Okay. So, zoom in on this, on this piece of property right here. Right there. Well, just to give you some bearings here, here's your one-hundred-and-eightieth and Blondo, and there's west, there's north. There's the mall hall property on this side, and I live up here. The big white building that you're seeing, well, you can't really see it.
That's it.
The white property is where my house and everything's at. But east of there, where am I going with this? Okay.
We understand.
Yeah, this is the area they wanna make the wetlands. This is the front property I own down here. My sister owns this property. My brother owns this property, and I own up here also. This is still all in agriculture, it's still in corn. And at the point, once these properties are taken, and if it's not zoned, you know, possibly commercial down there, I'm getting chiseled down from sixty acres. I'm down to, I will be down because of the OPPD substation and because of all that's going on with the wetlands. I'll be down to less than seventeen acres.
Where's the OPPD station? Is that that little gray box?
It is now in the middle of, I wish I had a current picture here. It's right in the corner of my ten-acre.
That's it, because there's days. That's it. That's OPPD.
Oh, gosh.
Your house is way up here.
I'm going blind. Okay, there's my, we're already up to here. All the way from here to here, that's the OPPD substation you're seeing, I'm sorry, the big white area. So, it's leaving me with this up here, taking the wetlands back here. And now, if this could be zoned, possibly commercial, if it's not blocked out by these guys, then, you know, I'm left with a worthless piece of property that's not gonna be worth seven-point, whatever it is, acres. Farmers are not gonna wanna come down there and put corn on it. So, now I've got a piece of property just sitting, doing absolutely nothing, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other opponents wish to speak? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. Larry, do you wanna come up and address some of the points made?
Which one? Half of one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Larry Jovan, one-hundred-and-fourteen forty Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I don't think I said their property would be worthless. I think what I said is it would be undevelopable for mixed-use, commercial-type uses, and the reason why is because unfortunately for them, or fortunately however you look at it, they have a lot of natural environment that runs through their property. They've got jurisdictional waterways, they've got wetlands. They just simply don't have the acreage that falls outside of that, those natural features to develop their property and meet all the mixed-use requirements, the grouping of buildings, the ten percent open space, the ten percent office requirements. And as the planning department knows, we typically don't zone property, especially out in west Omaha base district-type zoning. So, it's unfortunately, or unfortunately, they just have a lot of natural features on their property. So, I didn't say it was worthless.
Larry, would you like to apologize for misunderstanding?
Yeah, I apologize. I did not say your property was worthless, it's just not.
Do you accept this apology, ladies?
Thank you. Then I wanted to just point out a couple things with respect to the multifamily and just respond to that. We do have, I think it's a thirty-foot buffer on the western side of the property, which is code. The reason why we can't push it further over to the east, the multifamily, is because that's a jurisdictional waterway as well. So, we tried to push it as close as we could without encroaching into the jurisdictional waterway. What we did do is we were mindful of the neighborhood to the west, because we took the more dense product, of course, and put it in the middle. That density is nineteen-point-two units per acre, I think in the middle. On the outside, it's eleven-point-four units per acre and then thirteen-point-two units per acre, which is, under the definition of our master plan, low-density residential housing. So, anything under fifteen units is low-density. So, this is low-density residential housing. We could not encroach into the natural drainage way. We were also mindful of the neighborhood to the west, because what we did is, we have two, and these stub streets are in today at this location and at this location. What we did do is we added a street up here to get people onto Big Oak Parkway to avoid coming through the neighborhood and down to the extent possible. Also, there's a lot of connectivity in and through the mixed-use area. Again, this is the convenience mixed-use corner. It's really the only viable corner that can be developed for mixed-use, in our opinion. But I appreciate the comments of the neighbors. So, with that, I think I addressed everything. I just appreciate your recommendation and happy to answer any questions. Oh, I did wanna add, we did have that neighborhood meeting back October thirtieth, and we did invite the same requirements that the planning department does, three-hundred-foot notice. And we had about thirty, I would say thirty to forty people there. And we did have an hour. We actually had to rent the Elkhorn Middle School, and so people came in. Our presentation was actually very short, so we did open it up for questions, and I was hopeful that we addressed everyone's concerns and questions. So, I thought it was a productive, good meeting. We did have some proposed conceptual elevations of what these low-density product may look like. There are no exterior parking garages, because actually the garages are in the units in the buildings. So, that's why. So, it's a nicer product as it's adjacent to their single-family residential neighborhood. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Larry. Any comments, questions before we hear from the city? Eric, may we hear from the city?
Sure. I'd like to just touch on the intersection a little bit, specifically the property to the south of Blondo. There's a lot going on in that area with the future one-hundred-and-eightieth Street Bridge, as well as, you know, jurisdictional waterways, drainage ways, wetlands. You know, I do wanna point out, a large portion south of Blondo, a very large, most of the property is within floodplain, and there are floodplain development regulations. So, any potential development would have to deal with those. I also wanna point out that that drainage way, I believe it's a three-to-one-plus-fifty requirement. And what that means, without getting into the, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not gonna get into the, where that measurement would take place, but any drainage way has to be incorporated within an outlot, an unbuildable outlot. And either from the edge of the waterway, or even sometimes up a little bit higher on the slope, you have to measure that out fifty feet. Well, that's taking up a large portion of that southern property. So, I am skeptical that you could do a feasible mixed-use project there, just based on, you know, how land gets chopped up, when you have to do all the mixed-use requirements, when you have right-of-way, when you have the floodplain, when you have the jurisdictional waterway. So, you know, I'm not saying the land is worthless by any means, 'cause you could also, you could look at potential residential options. I mean, I think you have to really figure out, you know, what the county is purchasing and, you know, beyond that, look at what the usable land is, and we can always meet with you and engineers. So, I just wanna specifically point that out. Other than that, we're gonna continue to work with the developer on a few items. Regarding the mixed-use acreage, when a preliminary plat is approved by city council, it would lock in place those acres. You know, and sometimes it takes a while to develop that. I believe they're planning their commercial in a second phase, so, you know, if that holds true and they do some of the residential first, those acres are still locked up by this development, unless they decided to change it to all residential or something like that. So, the applicant will continue to work with us on a few items that are addressed in the recommendation report. And we are recommending approval of the rezoning from AG to DR, R4, R6, and MU, subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement prior to forwarding to city council. And then approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the twenty-seven conditions listed in the recommendation report being addressed with or prior to submittal of a final plat.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the rezoning from AG to DR, R4, R6, and MU, subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement prior to forwarding to city council, and approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the twenty-nine conditions outlined.
Twenty-seven.
Excuse me, twenty-seven outlined in the report, Department's recommendation report, prior to submittal of a final plat.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Roanoke?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Moving on to agenda item number eight, KC seven-sixteen-one-hundred. Relevant Community Church, care of Cory Nelson, request approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in a R4 district. Portions of the property is located in a flood fringe overlay district. This was laid over from our December meeting. Location, 21220 Elkhorn Drive. For the applicant, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Lee Hammon, sixteen-oh-one Dodge Street, appearing on behalf of Relevant Community Church. The applicant has pointed out, this was a laid-over item. The application is for an amendment to our conditional use permit strictly to allow an increase in the sign budget from the thirty-two square feet that's allowed under R4 by forty-eight-point-two-five feet. The additional signage would allow for a monument sign, which the design calls for sixteen-point-two-five feet, and an additional, what we have is a R logo sign of thirty-two square feet. The thirty-two square feet that's in the existing sign budget already accommodates the second sign. Both of the, what I'll call the R logo signs are backlit and otherwise meet the code. And the, I think the sticking point that came out of the last meeting was the fact that there's a facade that's backlighted that goes across the front of, two surfaces of building, and that is not part of the signage, but it was a concern for the neighbors. And so, we have reached out to the neighbors and had a meeting with them and discussed their concerns, and came back with a proposal to limit the hours of operation. And I've submitted that to the planning staff, and I trust they've given that to you. We had the meeting on December eleventh. On December twentieth, by, we scheduled a time where we could have the lighting on to what we would anticipate to be operated at, and both with the facade lighted and the logos lighted, and with just the logos by themselves lighted. And after that, we put out another proposal to the neighbors of limited hours of operation. And that proposal was, and I'll give you a copy of this, if you will, the facade lights, in other words, the solid white backlit panels is distinguished from the R logo panels, will never be left on past nine PM during the evening nighttime hours, all week long. The R logo backlit panels will never be left on past ten PM on Sunday through Thursday and midnight Friday and Saturday during evening and nighttime hours, if you may.
Sure.
Did you hear say the neighbors approved that?
We have not heard. Or we, we have not heard, it's my understanding they do not-
That, that's your pro, that's your, that's your proposal, the neighbors?
That was our proposal. Uh, we thought we were getting somewhere with it, but then we haven't, uh, heard any further response from them. I believe they're here today and will probably speak to that. The, I guess the question is whether that's even germane to the issues before you because all we're asking for is an increase in the sign budget, which is pretty typical for a, a church project in an R through, R4 district. Uh, we had Morrissey Engineering, uh, is the design engineer for the lighting. And they went out there, and you have a copy of their report. And they, they did, uh, testing of, of the different parameters required by city code. And at, uh, all the lighting meets city code, uh, it's, it's below the limits allowed by code. The, uh, well, yeah, it meets code. And the, the report, I think, speaks for itself. But, uh, we have Toby Samuelson here from Morrissey Engineering. If there are any questions as far as what's in the report, if you want further explanation of, of how the code works and how these restrictions work, uh, he can explain that for you. Even though I don't believe that any, any further restrictions are required beyond what the staff has recommended in their report, because we do meet code, uh, the church is still willing to have those restrictions I gave to you included in the conditional use permit amendment so that they're etched in stone and, and we can't just change them. I also have here Randy Millbreath from RDG, who was the architect for the project. If there's any other questions concerning the design aspects, anything like that. But with that, unless you have questions, I would respectfully ask that you approve the application as submitted. If you, if it's your pleasure to go ahead and add the additional restrictions that I've given you. And, uh, would be, uh, appreciate the opportunity to speak to any points raised by the opposition. Thank you.
I just have one question, just to clarify. I, I think I read this- That's right, that, you know, your responses to each of these code items is a computed, uh, answer, not a tested in-house answer. Is that correct?
Those are tested, the, the report-
On-site, tested onsite?
That's onsite testing.
Okay.
On-site testing, using state-of-the-art testing equipment. And Toby can explain that better than I can.
Okay, any other opponent, I mean proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents?
Members of the board, I'm Dave Domina, D-O-M-I-N-A, twenty-four twenty-five South Hundred Forty-Fourth Street, Omaha. I'm a lawyer. I'm here on behalf of eighteen households, that's about forty people, who are on the north side of Maple Street, across Maple Street from this applicant. They have never been contacted for a meeting about this project. I was contacted about that first. I was also then subsequently contacted by neighbors to the west who appeared before you previously. They have had some outreach from this applicant, and they have been offered what you've been told about today. It's not acceptable to them either. And I want to be very clear that this proposed compromise has nothing to do with the sign in question. The proposed compromise is about ours. But your definition of the term "sign" has nothing whatsoever to do with ours. By definition, a sign is any object which has characters, letters, figures, designs, faces, backgrounds, or outlines illuminated by incandescent fluorescent neon or other luminous tubes, lamps, light sources, external or internal, as a part of the object. They haven't proposed anything to change any part of the sign. None. Now, when they came here, they're here before you asking for a major amendment to a conditional use permit. So they started as an exception. They came before you applying for that conditional use permit as a church. And on their website, they describe themselves this way. They're also a rental hall, a commercial use, which is nearly as we can tell was never disclosed to you or to the city. Now, that may not be especially relevant today until we get to a couple of other things that were known when this initially came before you and are still a problem. You were shown this description of one side of the building in question. This is the side that faces toward the west. I have highlighted the area that is a sign. By definition, that is what is illuminated. That is what is, is affixed to the side of the building in the description of a sign in the ordinance that you administer. There's another one of those on the north side of the building that faces my people who live in Ramblewood, in modest homes of under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in value, who are working a couple of jobs, husband and wife, to try to make it, who can't be here today. Some of whom have put blankets on their windows fronting Maple Street. And I understand I'm here about a sign and not about light intensity. As nearly as I can tell by using a ruler to try to extrapolate the measurement, that sign to the west is about seventy-four feet long and about eleven feet high. The one on the west side is about a hundred and forty-five feet long and about the same height. As nearly as I can tell by driving it, there is no structure of comparable size on any commercial or other facility or building in this city from Two Hundred and Fourth Street to here. None. There's a calculation given you in the application today that's built on this object. And that's the calculation from which they represented to you that they're trying to increase the size of their sign. The calculation of the sign size that they offered you describes only what is calculated inside these perimeters. So it covers only the structure of this "R." And then to get to the number of square inches and square feet that is their sign, they took out these pieces. Because just multiplying seventy by seventy-two and dividing by a hundred and forty-four discloses that their representation of the size of this sign is off by about nine percent. And that leaves out all of the rest of the illuminated area on what is one twelfth of the sign to the west and one, I believe, sixteenth of the sign to the north. This is indeed a major amendment to a conditional use permit. It is being attempted as an end run around some people without considerable means to the north, maybe with considerable means to the west. But the entire objective of that sign is to focus that "R." When Omaha's leading bank puts up a sign effectively and well, and they do it effectively and well, they oftentimes use a solid background, white sometimes, and superimpose on it a green circle and a "1." They, you, no one would ever contend that the sign is only the green circle and the "1." But that's what you're being told today by an applicant who came in here for a conditional use permit and didn't tell you they were going to run a commercial enterprise. My clients are committed to fighting this as long as it takes and as hard as they have to. It needs to be turned down. But that's not all. All of that facade, that's not a part of that "R," that is a sign, that they're willing to turn off, needs to be taken off this building. It's a sign you didn't authorize. And it's a sign that's not consistent with the ordinance, and it'll just be a matter of time, if you leave it there, until somebody else tries to turn it on. Sign should come off. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
You're talking about taking off the sign, and if you turn that back on, are you just talking about the, the white, the, the turning off the lights on the white part?
No, sir.
You could have a white building.
You could have a white building, sir, but this portion, which is on the west, seventy-five feet or so-
Okay.
This portion, which is on the north, which looks shorter here but is actually quite a bit longer, that's all illuminated sign material that's bolted onto the side of the building at the distances required by your ordinance so that it can be electrified. And it is electrified. And actually, in one of the submissions in your packet, they show this side all lighted up with the heading "The Relevant Center." That's a sign.
The letters, the Relevant Center?
Right now, all they're using is that "R."
Okay.
And when they have all of this on and just the "R" illuminated, it works like First National Bank of Omaha. Draws your attention to the center. But if they wanted to, and is in the submission that's in your file and on your website, they put over here the words "The Relevant Center," showing that they at least had that planned. They know that's a sign. We know that's a sign, and of course, you know that's a sign. Just as surely as any other sign that just doesn't happen to be lighted up at the moment is a sign.
Just so I understand what, what the, the people that you represent are asking. If, if the white part was turned off-
Taken out. Taken off the building. That's what we want.
And the "R" in the box was lit up, just the square?
It's still non-conforming with the requirements. They would still need permission from you because of the size, but much of our concern would be satisfied.
Okay.
And frankly, maybe all. I'd have to canvass my people, but overwhelmingly, that would take care of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Dave, did, I mean, Lee, did you want to come up and address some of the points?
Yes, thank you. Lee Hammon, sixteen oh one Dodge Street. Uh, I would, I guess, take issue with Mr. Domina on what constitutes a sign and what constitutes, uh, architectural lighting, a facade. Uh, he made the statement that there's, I believe, if I understood him correctly, there's nothing else like this in the city where you have just a lighted area. In the report from Morrissey Engineering, Toby gave several examples of buildings around town where architectural lighting is used, uh, on extensive parts of the building. And so what we're really talking about here, and I think it's true to your sign ordinance, is the "R" logo. And architectural glass can be, uh, white as ours is, it can be red, whatever. But what we're really talking about is, is the logo here. So, uh, we're, we really need to stay focused on that, I believe. But we're not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. It's there for everybody to see. As far as the, uh, commercial use, this is a church. I mean, Relevant is very active in the, in the Elkhorn community. Uh, we put on a lot of events. One of the things that the Elkhorn community lacks is a place for people to gather, whether it be for youth gatherings or receptions or, you know, wedding receptions or anything like that. Uh, it's a family-friendly facility, and we do intend to let people use it. And as with most churches, we will take goodwill offerings to try to recoup our expenses. Are we going to make money off of that? No, I don't think any church does. But you can go up the street, you can look at, uh, St. Patrick's. They do a lot of community events up there. Their new addition, uh, has a tremendous amount of exterior lighting, and it's not, uh, backlit like ours is. It's, it's, it's very bright. I don't think it's inconsistent with, uh, with your sign ordinances. I mean, they have their, their, uh, symbols on their building and things like that. Where you draw the line on that, I, we leave that up to your staff, I guess. But, uh, I, I think we're, we're maybe making this into something that it's not. I can show you maybe for a little perspective. Mr. Domina had a view that comes at the building at a more, uh, oblique angle to that corner. But the lot, the sign does wrap around the building. It, it wasn't built to show the "R" as a center because if you look at that, the side that faces Maple Street, there's an "R" at the far end of that. But interestingly, when you look at this, that little spot you see up there, it happened to be a full moon that night, and that's, that's the kind of brightness we're talking about here. Uh, we're not trying to light up the neighborhood, and, uh, I guess, you know, they're, they're taking issue with whether the whole thing is a sign or not. But, uh, your staff has looked at the sign ordinance, we've looked at the sign ordinance, and the, this is architectural lighting, pure and simple.
On the supplemental conditions that you suggested, that includes the white banner or this, whatever you want to call that, the-
The facade? Yeah.
That all come off at nine and ten?
Right. Yeah, so what we're, what we're saying is, is, uh, so for the white part, we would never operate that past nine PM. And for the "R" logo, which is just that part and, and the one over on the, I'll call the north side, that would never be left on past ten PM on a Sunday through Thursday and never past midnight on a Friday or a Saturday. So the, so the white facade would be off.
So what type of lighting is that white light? What kind of light?
It's LED lighting.
LED. Is there any way that you can soften the light by choosing a different color or a different white lighting, something that would soften the lighting?
Well, it, it's, Toby's here, and he can speak to this better than I can. Uh, but it's, it's white light. We can't change the color of it. It is-
Is it all one continuous lighting?
Right. Just a second. Toby, you want to come up, give your name and address, please?
Toby Samuelson, Morrissey Engineering, forty-nine forty North Hundred Eighteenth Street.
Thank you.
It, it is LED. It's linear LED.
Okay.
Made up of four-foot individual luminaires that are attached end to end. We could not, to answer your question, we could not change it the color temperature. But we could, but it does have the capability to adjust intensity, i.e. dim. So we could dim it. However, the lu, the calculations that, that we took, that we were asked to take was just to confirm that we do comply with the City of Omaha Municipal Codes for exterior lighting ordinances. So we took those calculations at full brightness. So that, that's what the calculations were taking at, or the measurements, I should say, the measurements were taken at that. And from my understanding, the owner's desire is they think that looks the best. However, it could dim, it has that capability.
And, and you've done a lot of lighting research. I mean, you understand lighting and, and what constitutes a sign?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Is this a sign, in your opinion?
The red "R" is a sign.
The rest of it is not a sign?
Is, is the Topol Hall and Performing Arts Center a sign? You know, is Dew Space a sign? You know, it, it's a illumin, a backlit illuminated building facade, is what I would call it. It's a backlit facade. The "R" logo is a sign, in my opinion. I would call the Topol Hall and Performing Arts Center a sign for the Holland.
Toby, if you turned the, if you turned it off, do they, does everything shut off? So is it, are they, are they dependent upon each other?
No.
Okay.
Did you, Toby, did you do the lighting design on this?
Yes.
Okay. You could have gone with the color-changing LED, but you chose not to.
No, color-changing, please clarify. Are you saying like red, green, and blue color-changing, or are you saying color-temperature changing?
Color-temperature. You could have gone with a twenty-seven-hundred K or something like that.
I could have done, gone on twenty-seven-hundred K, yes. I could have done dynamic white, which would change the color temperature, but that is, I'm sure, more expensive.
Okay.
Maybe part of the issue on this is that because the white behind the "R," and there's no, there's no separation between the "R" and that whole white sign banner. If, if it was a, it does look like one sign the way it looks right now. But if, if there was a dark spot and then part of the building had pinstripe or had, had lighting or whatever, that would be an architectural element, lighting element to the building. But, but this is contiguous.
Can I ask a question? These plans, after you've completed, were submitted to the city for permit.
That's correct.
And during the permit process, if there's signs on there, they always know- And during the permit process, if there's signs on there, they always note on there that the separate permit's required for the sign, right?
I would say yes.
Okay. Well, I know they are.
I'm, I'm not an architect. I don't design signs.
Okay, but, well, I'm a contractor, so I have to submit them. And so the other side of it is, though, those are not noted on those plans, so the, the plans indicate that that's a backlit architectural panel, correct?
You have to look at the architectural drawings. I don't know the answer to that question.
Sir, did you want to come up, give your name and address, please?
Randall Millbreath with RDG Planning Design, nine hundred Farnham Street. So the plans as submitted labeled that entire facade area minus the "R", or the facade area as a backlit facade, much like the Holland Center. TD Mary Trade, all of those buildings. That was the intent.
So had it been, had the city have felt that it was a sign, they would have called it a sign and asked for separate permit for it, correct?
Right. At some point, time-wise, late in the game, it was, was brought to our attention that that could be in dispute. So we started the process of, of identifying the square footage related to the "R" and our interpretation of signage and, and the request.
Right, and this report that you have presented with, to us, indicates that in physical testing, it meets all the code requirements for, for lighting, building lighting and site lighting.
That's correct.
Okay.
I might make one additional point. I think the, the attorney gentleman who presented for the opposition mentioned the intent to say "The Relevant Center", and there are, there are no drawings that say "The Relevant Center." The "R" was the only thing. Now, he might have been referring to Monument Sign that was submitted. So I think there was just some confusion there. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. Lee, are you done with your rebuttal?
Yeah, I couldn't give you one more.
All right.
View of, that's the "R" all by itself. It has some panel around it, but and there was a sign permit taken out for one of the Rs that, you know, fits within the budget, and we're here to get the, the approval for the amendment to get the additional square footage if we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, before we hear from Eric? Eric?
Sure, yeah. Just to address a couple of those items. The Relevant Center sign, yeah, I believe that was the Monument Sign. That's about sixteen, sixteen point two-five square feet. And then there's two wall signs each, considered thirty-two square feet in size. The way we measure a wall sign, that white part, those backlit panels, is not part of the signage that we use for calculations. You know, addressing the idea of a commercial operation for weddings or funerals, you know, it's not uncommon for churches to have that as an accessory part of the primary religious assembly use. I mean, we have all been to, you know, a funeral where you had a lunch afterwards, and we're not calling that a funeral home. So that's just considered accessory to the, the primary religious assembly use. For schools and churches and residential zoning, we're usually supportive of an increase in the signage budget. Because of the residential zoning, there is a small amount of signage that is, that is allowed by the zoning code. So it is not uncommon, uncommon that we support, you know, an increase in that signage. Religious assembly is conditional use permit, which is received a couple of years back. In order to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get a waiver for that signage, it has to come before us for the major amendment. So city staff recommends approval of the major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in our four district, subject to the seven conditions in the recommendation report.
Eric, I had one question I forgot to ask you. David made the comment that the residents on the north side, Ramblewood, were never notified. Can you speak to that?
We sent out notifications from three hundred feet from the subject site. West Maple Road is a large right-of-way, so that takes up a good portion. I did just confirm during this that, you know, to check our notification list, we have a map and a list, and we notified within three hundred feet.
Okay, thank you.
We're having a couple of different discussions.
The official request is to allow an increase in the budget of signage for the site. All the other issues of the lighting and whatnot, I mean, you can definitely consider that, and if you want to incorporate Lee's suggestions, you can add those as two conditions. You know, I, I guess I, I failed to mention that, based on all the information that we have, looking back at the approved building permits, looking at the memo that Morrissey Lighting has approved, or provided to us, is that all of the lighting is in compliance with our Chapter Forty-four of the Municipal Code.
Do you know how the city, if you look at the attachment A-three that Mr. Domina brought up, are, are they treating that "R" like a channel letter where you would put a box around just the "R"? Or would you put, would you, and cut it in half when there's channel letters, like an Office Depot, or Office Max, or a sign like that? Or would you take the whole square and call that the sign?
By, no means a signage expert. We do have one of those upstairs, but you, you box it off usually, is, is how it's calculated.
So, so with what you're saying, then the seventy inches by seventy-two inches should really be the square. To me, this looks like a box sign, especially if it's illuminated around where the, we just have black and white drawings. Well, that's a different story. So the, the question is, is how much of the sign budget do these Rs take up? Is there two of them on the building, or what is one?
Yeah, there's two. Each one is thirty-two square feet in size.
Okay. And measuring from corner to corner?
I do not, I, I would defer to our sign inspector, who has looked at these during the, during this report and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So I'm wondering, I mean, there's obviously some opposition, and I wonder if we should lay this over? And I, and I realize there's a lot of contention on both parts in, in the end. Is, is there any hurry on, other than the annoyance factor that the neighbors are, are contending? Actually, can I have a representative of the church come up? Would, Mr. Homan, is, if, 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 if we proposed a thirty-day layover and said, you know, there's a number of issues that need to be addressed, you know, obviously, you need to talk to the neighborhood, both sides of the street, and see if there's any kind of, you know, because they've never had a chance to, to formally reply to this, it sounds like, number one.
No, they've had, well, at least the neighbors to the west have had that since the twentieth of December.
Okay. And it doesn't sound like Mr. Domina's going away anytime soon. So, um, does anybody, do I have any support here on laying it over? Or what do you guys want to do?
If you want to make a motion to lay over, go ahead and make a motion. We'll see if we get a second.
Can we get a sign person down here?
I think you have that discussion. Let, let's find out what we're voting on and figure out what the sign, how much sign budget there really is, and if you could work the city and, and the neighbors. And let, let's try to do this right, I think.
Well, I mean, I, I guess we have an official recommendation report. We're saying the square footage of the signage is what it is. I, I don't, that's the city's stance, at least.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
I, I move to lay over this case for thirty days.
Do we have a second? We don't have a second. Do we have another motion?
Make a motion to approve the major amendment, conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in our four district. Portion of the property is located in Flood Fringe Overlay District, subject to the seven conditions in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
No.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved. Five, one.
Okay. Before we move on, I need to, Dave Rosacher reminded me that Vice Chair Chris Carnes had to leave for an important meeting. She's on the West Side School, District Sixty-six School Board, in there. She had a meeting where they had to interview the next superintendent, so. We'll move on to agenda item number ten. Case C-three dash fifteen dash sixty-two. Applicant Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of an amendment to the Rose-on-South Hill TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, northeast of Eleventh and Briggs Street, and southeast of Twelfth and Briggs Street. Bridget, can you make it fast? We'll hear from Bridget with City of Omaha.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Bridget Hathley, City Planning, and I'll do my best. So this is an amendment to a project that was approved about three years ago for thirty-six, four-cell townhomes. What you see highlighted in blue are the original thirty-six townhomes, and the request before you today is for an additional six units, which are at this location highlighted in yellow. So it is an amendment to an existing TIF redevelopment project plan. I should, I want to acknowledge that I know that there are some members of the, I believe, Dollman Neighborhood Association who are here. Of course, the development team of Clarity Development is here. We always encourage our developers to get involved and, and meet with the Neighborhood Association to share and talk about the plan and inform them. We do know, as the Planning Department, has been made aware of some opposition, but we also have been made aware of some support for the project, and there are some support letters and emails that have been sent to me. I believe I've shared them with the planners, if, if you would like to see them. But again, the project before you is for an additional six townhomes, again, highlighted here in yellow. They will be three stories high, two bedrooms, three baths, two car garages, and they will be loaded from the alley. So the garages are from the alley, will be accessible from the alley. The zoning, in terms of the zoning, it is residential. The land use is residential, so there's really no change in land use except to increase the density. The zoning is R-seven. They are going, we have recommended a PUR overlay for this particular project. The developer has applied for a site plan review, and our planners have given them comments, the developer comments, and the planners are waiting for, or, or under, undergoing their review of the PUR and the replat. So that we know that the urban design team has reviewed. So here is the site plan again. This is the site, the site plan, streetscaping, the, the six units. And this is where the, the driveway for the garage access, and then I have here some elevations. And as I was about to say, our urban, I don't know if that shows up very well, but the urban design team has reviewed the elevations and has made a decision that they are compatible with the original thirty-six that have been built. And they do comply, so our planning department is basically in support of the project. It is a good project. It's basically an infill, continuing infill in this particular area. There's an additional six hundred and fifty-two thousand in TIF that this amendment does ask for, and the TIF-eligible expenses are acceptable. So with that, I will give way to the developer.
Tom McClay, thirty-eight fourteen Farnham Street. I, I am not here to ask for a sign. I don't think I am. Maybe Mr. Domina will tell me otherwise. Thank you, Bridget, here to ask for support for our financing for this additional six units. This is just a, a half a block away from the original thirty-six row houses that we've, we've built down there. I guess to Chairman Rosenbaum's request, to be brief, I'll, I think there's quite a bit of information there. I will talk about, as Bridget indicated, in November, reached out to Mary Thompson, who's here with the Dollman Neighborhood Association, to attend the December meeting. Mary said that, no, the December meeting was for fun, so apparently, I'm not fun. So I did not, was not invited to the December meeting. We did go to the January Dollman Neighborhood Association meeting, presented the, the project to a group. There were a few folks raising some concerns. I think all of them are here today. We did have quite a bit of support. Mr. Robert Sinear is here to also express some support for the project. In talking with the, a lot of the folks right in this immediate neighborhood, I will say, I've owned property down there for thirteen years now. Originally purchased a duplex down there. I have always really, kind of had a soft spot for this area of the city. I really think the vast majority of folks are quite supportive. We did get a lot of them to send emails in to Bridget, including Jeff Spees, who's a, was the president of the South Omaha Neighborhood Alliance, the overseeing organization for the Dollman Neighborhood, as well as others. Robert's been kind enough to meet us here. Other folks do work commitments and the like during the day. Were not able to make it. Happy to answer any questions that you all might have and request your support for the project. Mr. Sinear?
Tom, before you leave.
Sure.
My, it was a lighthearted comment that I made with Bridget. You take as much time as, as you feel you need, so.
Yeah.
We did spend quite a bit of time in our pre-meeting talking about this project, so.
Great.
But take as much time as you need.
Okay.
Tom?
Tom, I'm not sure who to answer this question.
I'm running out. Sorry about that.
I have a question regarding the, the financing. On this original project, twenty-nine units were sold, but now, all of a sudden, because of the addition of this million-plus-dollar thing, we're, we've got three million dollars also that we're trying to add to it. I'm, I'm confused by that.
I guess I'm a little not tracking your question.
Well, what's the cost of the, of these, of this, this new row house that's six?
I'm going to actually defer, Mike Peter, my business partner with Clarity Development. I thought he's.
Hi, Mike Peter, three-eight-one-four Farnham. So I, I'd kind of, I'd let Bridget know, and I, I think it was in your, in your information package. We did have a lot of costs that were incurred on, on top of the project. Our homes sold for twenty to thirty percent more than what we were originally anticipating them being, but our costs were the same. So, so what is actually being asked here is that, I believe, the construction contract of the new, the new estimated cost is one point eight million. And the only TIF costs that are being attributed to the original thirty-six were already previously approved TIF costs. So the ones that are, that are being proposed for this project is the four hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
I'm still confused, because you, you're asking basically for five million more, but the cost is only one point eight million. That's why I'm, I'm not understanding.
I'm not sure what, yeah.
Bridget Hathley, Planning. So the three point two million that you see in the report is just the reference to the additional costs that they incurred on the original thirty-six. So as you were saying, with construction costs increases, labor costs increases, and some of the homeowners asking for higher-end finishes, so costs increase by that three point two million. So that's really just to indicate that there were a lot of increases on the thirty-six. But as it relates to the amount of TIF for the, the six units, the cost for the six units is just one point eight, and the TIF related to the six is about four hundred and eighty-some thousand. The total TIF that is being asked for, for this amendment is six fifty-two. So the TIF related to the six of the six fifty-two is about four hundred and eighty-some thousand. That difference that he mentioned, the four hun, the hundred and eighty, is attributable to TIF-eligible expenses that were acceptable under the original thirty-six. But we just.
So, but once we, once we make a, a deal on a TIF application, we don't go back and audit it and, and then change that TIF amount? But we are here.
Well, no. What happens is, if there's a TIF that's approved, if there is an amendment to that, we can add to that particular TIF project.
And that's.
And that can increase the amount of TIF because of the, the scope of the project can increase. So that can increase the amount of TIF. If that makes sense.
Well, I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Any other proponents?
Hi, Robert Sinear, twelve eighteen South Twelfth Street. I'm one of the original homeowners of Townview Terrace, which was a city-sponsored development between Briggs and Pierce. I'm just here to say I totally support this quality of development. I think it's, there's a lot of momentum going in our area. There's a lot of people moving down, and I think this would just be great for our neighborhood. The lot is currently empty. There was a house that was very well-maintained in the late eighties and nineties. It became a rental unit after the owner died, and it was just simply trashed and litter and everything. So this kind of development is just what our neighborhood needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Come on down. You can take a seat up front and give your name and address, please.
My name is Mary Thompson, thirteen oh nine South Sixth Street. I'm president of the Dollman Area Rehabilitation Effort, commonly referred to as the Dollman Neighborhood Association. We are here today to say that we do not object to development in our neighborhood. What our concern is that there has never been dialogue with the association, with Mr. McClay, on this particular project. Yes. And the majority of the residents and members, you know, until last week, he did come to our monthly meeting. We would request that this project be held over until we have a complete meeting with the developer. The only contact I had was an email addressed to my administrative assistant, who fell and broke her ankle in two places and is in Arkansas recuperating. In late November, I think it was three days before our regularly scheduled meeting, requesting that he come, I said, I'm sorry, December is out of the question. Could you come in January? And, excuse me, I had heard nothing of this project in the neighborhood. And we've never been invited to a meeting or had any presentation with any information about this proposed project in addition to the other development. We feel that we should be better informed of his intent, which affects more than just the street and, in the grand scheme of things, the entire neighborhood. I've welcomed their participation in our monthly meeting last week at the Cabrini Parish Center, located at twelve twenty-eight South Tenth, which did not clearly enlighten the neighborhood association of all the issues attached to this project. There are just too many variables associated with this TIF request and the other projects not completed in our neighborhood, which I feel has been a great disservice to the neighborhood as a whole. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I don't think so. Any other opponents?
So I was doing a little research in Terry White, nineteen fifty-one South Eleventh Street. In two thousand seventeen, of twenty-two TIF applications, nineteen were approved, so I guess it's fairly easy to get them approved. Two thousand master plan, I've, account of word usage. Affordable was used sixty-five times. Rehabilitation was used twenty-nine times. Infill was used three times, and White, it was used two times. There's been a focus on North Omaha redevelopment, and it's swung down to the south of the downtown area, and there's a interest in providing housing to support the downtown. They are degrading the neighborhood by putting in modern-style houses, housing in a neighborhood that's mostly one and a half story. They want to put in four-story in a neighborhood where you might have a house with a yard. They're putting in maybe twenty-six units. The setback is minimal, and the style is not consistent with the appearance in the neighborhood. It's a historic neighborhood. A major source of income to the city is tourism. History of the city is neglected. If they promoted the history of the city more and protected historic neighborhoods, it would draw, draw more, more money. Mr. McClay said that it's not a historic district. You can stand on top of his building at Tenth and William. You can see a house where someone lived who, at the age of twelve, was running for the Pony Express, home of steamboat captain, home of, home of someone who branched with Buffalo Bill Cody, someone who went on campaign with General Crook, someone who went to the Black Hills in eighteen seventy-four with Custer. So it's a historic district, and we need to be more careful about what we do with that. There are small houses. If these people go to deck on these new residences, they'll be looking five stories down to the backyards of these people, people's houses. That's all.
Anyone else?
Marie Sadlaczek, ten fifteen William Street. I'm active in the Dollman Neighborhood Association. I'm also on the steering committee of what's called Historic South Tenth Street. And I inquired of Don Seaton and Bridget. I had a question for them after our Dollman Neighborhood Association meeting, and I sent her a long email. Tom McClay had mentioned at the association meeting in this past month that he had been working with the city for these six months on this project, and this was the first time we had heard from him. So I wanted to verify that with her, and she did, and Bridget did indeed reply that Mr. McClay had been working with the city at least six months on this project. And we had not heard anything of that from him. He could have come to any of the groups this past summer, this early fall, to share his intentions and garner some feedback. Other developers have systematically approached both Dollman Neighborhood Association and Old Market South and Historic South Tenth Street to share their projects, and then modify them usually after, after modifying their plans after they meet with us. McClay has not done that. Phase two of Johnson Rose, Johnston Rose, has stood idle this past summer. And also, there's been some contention that perhaps all the units have not been fully occupied. And one of Mr. McClay's rationales for providing the six units on Briggs Street is to provide more homeownership. And I did take a look at the assessor's website. Not sure if I'll be able to get two images here side by side, but we'll try. If that works. So here's the original thirty-six units that have the original TIF funding attached. And this of the six units that Bridget pointed out. So if you look at the web, assessor's website, all the units that are highlighted in yellow basically are also highlighted over here in yellow. And they basically are owned by investors. They're not owned by homeowners. Mr. McClay came to our neighborhood association and said that he had sold already twenty-eight out of the thirty-six units, and that he was providing home ownership to the neighborhood. But in looking at it, that's really not the case. They're owned by investors, and the ones that are unhighlighted are actually purchased at full market rate. Otherwise, basically fifty percent of the original twenty-six were, have been owned, are owned by investors, not homeowners, who have any sort of vested interest in this neighborhood. In addition to that, the last ten down here along the bottom, adjacent to the Sons of Italy property, have been stagnant, have not been worked on since the summer, and so have not been sold. So if you take a look at it of the total project, basically twenty-six units of the thirty-six have, have not sold or have been sold to investors at below-market rate, at about a quarter of the cost. So about seventy-two percent of the project is not occupied by homeowners. And that is one of the primary reasons that Mr. McClay put forward in his meeting with the neighborhood association. And so for that reason alone, we would suggest that if he has not made good on his initial TIF investment, why would you grant him more TIF money for another project?
I want to clarify, I want to make sure I'm clear.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting that the units are owned by investors and they're leasing or renting the units out to individuals?
I don't know.
Or how was the title conveyed from the developer to the?
They appeared to have been purchased, and then there's like one unit that already that person who originally purchased it for sixty-seven thousand dollars. All of those that appeared to be owned by investors have been purchased for sixty-seven thousand dollars.
We'll ask him the question, ma'am.
I'm sorry?
We'll ask him, we'll have him come up and answer to that.
And so then that one unit has been resold at full market rate. But other than that, I don't know what other people are doing with their units.
I'll bring you back up to clarify that, Tom.
Okay.
Is there any other point you want to make?
The other thing I would mention is, Mr. McClay had, had mentioned that we needed his development. Well, first of all, we do have some vacant lots. That vacant lot that Mr. McClay has did have property on it. He vacated, he purchased it, demolished the stuff on it, and then used it as storage for his construction project. And he also has other property along Twelfth Street, which is been, which he purchased, and then he demolished the, the buildings on that. So I can understand why the neighbors would want to have that developed, and certainly we do. But I'm not saying, I'm, I'm contending that perhaps this developer is, is not the one that we want to have in the area, because he hasn't really made good on his initial development. So why would you give more money to somebody who has not really completed his contract with the neighborhood? That's my comment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Tom, would you like to come up?
Yes, please. I, I will appreciate the passion of, of the, the opponents here, the Dollman Neighborhood folks. It's part of what makes a great neighborhood is passionate homeowners. We, we have tried to work with them, as I indicated. We did reach out to them a couple of months ago. We have talked with the city about this lot for a while. We've had plans, we've had concepts that oftentimes have been shot down by the planning department, and we were sent back to the drawing board. And so over the course of time, we eventually did find something that worked, and at that point in time, we got the planning department's approval to move forward and started reaching out to, to the neighborhood association to meet with them, which we did. And I think we had a spirited meeting. And really, I think that the support was mostly there. As I said, the, Mr. Sinear is here to support the project. There's been a number of letters and emails sent to support the project as well. So I, I really think the neighborhood support is there. I think there is a, a passionate vocal minority that, that is being represented. But that's good. That's good dialogue, and that's always needed, and we want to see that. In regards to Ms. Slidz, Sadlaczek's comments, they're just one hundred percent wrong. I'm not sure where she is getting the idea of investors owning it. We have sold twenty-eight of the units. One of them was purchased, and they now rent it. They elected not to live there, and they do rent it out. There were a gentleman who moved away from the city, and he now has just rented. All of the others are owned by families. I would refer to an email that Bridget received from one of our homeowners about the project, talking about their joy of the homeowners' association and the, the homes that they now live in there with Fourth of July fireworks from the rooftops, monthly happy hours at the Burlington League. I think we've created a great community at the South Hill location, and I do think we've spurred some development. There is a new single-family home that is under construction. The footings were put in across the street from ours on Eleventh Street, next door to a home that was built prior to us. One of the things that inspired us was a modern-designed home that was built on Eleventh Street. Prior to us, there, the Tenth Street, the CO2 apartments were built prior, a modern desire, design apartment building. The Blue Barn Theater came in with a really neat, modern design style. The neighborhood has great eclectic architecture from colonial to French Renaissance to arts and crafts throughout the neighborhood, and it's been, I think, a great neighborhood to receive another architectural style, to make it a more eclectic look to it. But going back to Ms. Sadlaczek's comments, she seems to be confusing a little bit the sale of the lot and then the, the construction of the home. So the, the process that we go through is each lot has been valued at sixty-seven thousand dollars. So one of our entities, one, two, three, four, South Tenth LLC, actually purchases the lot and then enters into a contract with the homeowner to then purchase, to, for then, for, for us then to build the house on that lot. So that has been the process that we've been going through over the last, really, probably three years now, I, I think, as we're, we're getting into this. But all twenty-eight of those are single-family homeowners living there that have created a great community, with exception of the one I do know of, which she moved away and he does rent it out. I don't think that is an investor per se. I think that's very, not, not atypical for someone to own a home and rent it for a time period and then turn to look to sell it. So I, I take a slight bit of offense, I think, to her comments to imply that somehow we did not do exactly what we said we were going to do and what we're saying at the neighborhood association meeting, what I'm saying to you here today.
So the, I want to make sure. So when you, you, you own the property.
Correct.
And then you develop it, and then you sell the individual units. Before construction, you sell the individual units to the home buyers?
So we sell, it's a fee simple, so it's thirty-six separate parcels.
Right.
So they're each fee simple. This is not a condominium regime. This is a thirty-six separate plots.
Individual lots.
With the homeowners' association, just like you'd have in West Omaha. The importance of that is the financeability of condos for a homeowner is very, very difficult, as you all, Trent, and I'm sure knows, in, in the world you guys live in. So, so what we do is we actually sell them a piece of dirt, and that dirt is priced at sixty-seven thousand dollars. We then enter into a contract with them to build the row house on that piece of dirt that their row house sits. So that's the sixty-seven thousand dollars.
So title is conveyed at that time to the homeowner?
Correct. Title is conveyed to the homeowner. The homeowner then gets financing oftentimes. We've, we've financed some of them ourselves, some of them, sometimes the homeowner does through banks such as yours and, and others. They get a loan themselves, a construction loan, just as if you would in West Omaha. You buy a lot in West Omaha, you go to, i- i- any bank, I won't name any, any bank.
I'm retired.
That you can, you, you can, you can go to and receive a home loan construction, then that is drawn upon to actually build the home.
Yeah, okay.
So that, it's, it's no different than the process that you would see any, in any West Omaha subdivision, purchase the lot.
And they subsequently live in that, in that unit.
And then we, and, and so they actually own, we deed those over to them, and then they own the dirt, and then we have a contract to build it. So we're, we're really the, the land seller and the construction company in these.
Uncompleted ones, though, are they just dirt now, or?
No, no, they're not. I'd love you to go down. I should have brought some pictures. No, we have shelved, all of the ones, everything is shelled out. All of the, the remaining eight are all shelled completely, enclosed, front doors on them, garage doors on them. They are all along the line. They are abutting Sons of Italy, which, as you all might know, had a fire not too long ago. During that, they have been unable to get financing to complete their project. So these, the remain, the only ones remaining, all the other twenty-six that do not abut Sons of Italy are all sold to homeowners who would now reside in them. The Sons of Italy ones. The Sons of Italy ones, Sons of Italy just kind of has piles of brick and some equipment that sits there and a half-completed building, which is not, of course, the way we would hope that it would be, and, you know, no anticipation of a fire occurring there.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Any additional comments, questions? We've heard from the city. Eric, did you want to add anything?
Just in the upcoming few months, I would anticipate a plat and P U R to come in with those. That'll be required, based on what they're doing. City recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number 11, KC 3-19-1. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the 49 Place TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, 209 South 49th Street. Don, may we hear from the city?
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. This TIF project planned for 49 Place proposes the new construction of for-sale, market-rate row homes, nine units. Site is located on 49th Street between Farnham and Douglas. Let's see. I guess site plan, Farnham, Douglas, 49th Street. These are three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath units, each with a two-car garage. One of the nice features of the site design is that there's a single curb cut off Douglas, which keeps traffic off Farnham. It also allows a lot of ample landscaping and aesthetic improvements along the right of way in front of the building. So we have good traffic control and good aesthetics with the property. Site is presently vacant. There's an underutilized surface parking facility there and a community garden on the south portion, which serves as a temporary use. Developer is Design Development LLC, Tim Holland, manager. Total project cost is a little north of $5 million. They are asking for $883,330 in support from the TIF program. Project's an appropriate land use for this location and complies with the goals of the city's master plan. We ask for your approval. Let me give you a couple of elevations, well, in a perspective. Thank you.
Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Hello, Tim Holland, 119 South 49th Avenue. Appreciate your time, and we're going to do this quickly because I know it's almost five. We have met with the Neighborhood Association Board. We've also met with all the neighbors around the proposed project and have support for everybody on the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions from the board?
I think this is a great project for this area. Good job, man.
We've heard from the city. Eric, do you want to add anything?
Just want to point out the consent agenda. You did approve the plat and the P U R repealed the P U D, so that was also on today's agenda. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on, agenda number, agenda item number 12, KC 3-19-2. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Logan Building TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, 1802 Dodge Street. Don?
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. This is a, this TIF project is a historic building rehab, comprehensive rehabilitation of a seven-story structure. It's been vacant for quite some time, one decade at least, possibly two. Located at the northwest corner of 18th and Dodge. Developers Logan Hospitality LLC, Mike Works, manager. Basically, what they're proposing to do is a, it'll be a condominium regime with four to six penthouse condominium units, residential at the top. Essentially, it's going to be a hotel redevelopment, 90-room boutique hotel, Indigo brand. There will also be a speakeasy bar in the, in the project. Main level has some retail and office space as well, but primarily a 90-room Indigo hotel. There'll be some parking on site, about 25 spaces. Let me give you a couple of other drawings to look at. Let's look at the site plan. Be some parking on site, about 25 spaces to the west. There's a little bit of a lot on the north. See existing building. For some surface parking. They'll also be leasing 60 to 70 spaces at the city parking facility at 19th and Capital. Total project investment in downtown with this site is about $20,700,000, almost $20.8 million. They're asking for $2,776,500 in support from the TIF program. I would note that they're also making use of, and have made application for, with the mayor's office and Kevin Anderson, an application for the enhanced employment area, employment tax. They'll be using historic preservation income tax credits as part of the project, and they're also looking at using the PACE financing. PACE being the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, which is primarily a financing tool for, for energy conservation in these types of projects. Project's an appropriate land use for the site, and it complies with our master plan. It's a good investment in downtown. It's a building we'd really like to see put back into use. We ask for your approval.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Thank you, Don. Michael Sands, 1700 Farnham Street, Suite 1500. I represent the developer, Logan Hospitality. Mike Works is here as well on behalf of Logan Hospitality, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I just want to say, it's nice to see someone finally able to take this project forward. It's been wanting someone for a long time.
Yep. We've heard that a lot.
It's overdue.
We're excited for it, too.
Overdue. Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions? Eric, we've heard from the city. Any additional?
Just recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number 13, KC 3-19-3. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Midtown Hotel at 71st and Haskell, TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, 3301 South 72nd. Don?
Yes, again, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. We'll take you to a little different part of town from where we were just at. 71st and Haskell. Some of you may be familiar with the Coco Key Hotel. This is the hotel immediately north of that site. It has been vacant almost two years, but in most recent, its most recent use, it had been a Baymont Inn. The building has been vacant, as I mentioned, for a while now. It's also not been maintained, and it's had a problem with vagrants breaking in, and there are some code violations with the building presently that just inspected recently. Building and the site really need something. The existing building under this proposal is going to be demolished and the site cleared. A brand-new hotel building with 135 rooms will be constructed. It will be a dual-branded hotel, basically meaning there's two types of hotels operating out of the same building, same facility, sharing common amenities. There'll also be on the site a separate, get this way, this is 72nd Street, a separate outbuilding, a real small commercial building, quite likely scooters or something along that line. The access to the site has been reconfigured. This access will not happen. It will be shut off. The access for the site will be off Haskell, so we'll be eliminating an additional curb cut along 72nd Street, which is good. The building will be a four-story hotel, 96,300 square feet. Developer is M H Hospitality. Dan Merrick, manager. Mr. Merrick's had extensive experience with operating and developing hotels in our mark, local Omaha market. Let's put up a rendering here. Project cost is a little over $18.2 million. The TIF support requested is $3,38,797. The land use is appropriate for this location, complies with the goals of the city's master plan. We ask for your approval. And Larry Jobin is here on behalf of the owner and applicant, and he wanted me to let you know that he's available if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Come forward. Name and address, please.
Sandy Zedan, 4817 Douglas. And this is the first I heard of this, but why don't they just, is it going to be called the Midtown Hotel? Why don't they call it the Blackstone Hotel? Blackstone, I mean, it seems the name is misleading. That's my only comment.
Okay. Thank you. Any other opponents that wish to speak? Okay, close the public hearing. Did anybody want to address Sandy's point? Larry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Larry Jobin, 11440 West End Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I guess what I would say about that, this is just the name of the redevelopment plan. It has really no significance. The dual-brand hotel is a home, too, and a true brand, which is actually the first of its kind, or first of its kind brand in the city of Omaha. It's a Hilton product. So I think that's just, the name of the redevelopment plan really has no relevancy to what is actually being done here, is, I guess, my answer to that question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Eric, do you want to add anything?
Recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number 14, KC 3-19-4. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Victory Apartments II TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, 819 Dorcas Street. Bridget, may we hear from the city?
Afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Before you is, is basically a phase two of the Victory Apartments. Victory Apartments I, which is right here, is a, was a permanent supportive housing project that was approved some years ago, maybe four to five years ago. And this project before you today is at this site here. This whole campus used to be Grace University, and they've vacated the site. This particular use was, had been office, had been some dorms decades ago. Most recently, before this application, maybe one or two floors had been used for storage, but the building had been mostly vacant. So this is an adaptive reuse back to one-bedroom permanent supportive housing for veterans. There are going to be 60 units in this particular, at this particular site. At the Victory Apartments I are other supportive services that will support the tenants at this particular building, so it just made sense to continue with permanent supportive housing at that particular site. There are four floors at that unit or at that building. The estimated total project cost of this particular project is $8.2 million, and the TIF is about $347,000. There is low-income housing tax credit that are involved in this particular funding capital stack, and a lot of times that, there is a rent restriction, so that means the TIF is a lot lower, but it is still a very, very worthwhile project. So with that, I'd ask for your approval.
Are there any other proponents that wish to speak?
Michael Sands, 1700 Farnham Street, Suite 1500. Again, I represent the developer on this project. The two representatives, George and Zach are here from the, from the developer, and would like to offer up any answers to any questions that the board might have. Thank you.
Okay. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Recommend approval.
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
See you guys, thanks for coming. Agenda item number 17, KC 10-16-287 and C 12-16-288. Applicant Jasper Stone, 192nd and Dodge LLC, request revised preliminary plat approval of Avenue I, a subdivision inside and outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. Final plat approval of Avenue I lots 1 through 8 and outlots A and B, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. And final plat approval of Avenue I lots 9 through 11 and outlot C, a subdivision inside and outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. Location southeast and southwest of 192nd Street and West Dodge Road. Jim, you're representing the applicant?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all. This, Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the applicant at Avenue I. I've lost a couple of my representatives today to the nature of the marathon session. We only lost one planning board member, but Brian Shealy is here from Olson Associates on the engineering team, and hopefully I'll be able to answer any other questions that might come up. So this is the Avenue I project. I have a, this is the revised preliminary plat that I have up on the screen here for perspective. This is West Dodge Road and then 192nd Street. So this is the west side of the project and the east side of the project, it's over here. It's a fairly large mixed-use project, 180 acres. And then you combine it with the R and R projects on the east and west. It's well over 200 acres of mixed-use project, and so it's a fairly major undertaking by the, by the parties, and it's been a long time coming. We've been working on it for several years, so maybe it's appropriate that we've had a long session today, I guess. I'm not sure about that. But anyway, so we're here for our revised preliminary plat to secure approval of that, and then our final plat of Phase I, which is, as indicated, a total of 11 commercial acres. There's three on the west and eight on the east side of the project, generally at the corners, at the corner of West Dodge and 192nd Street. Since we last appeared before the planning board, which was some time ago, as I've indicated, we've undertaken some very long collaborative efforts with the R and R Realty team, with the City of Omaha, with the state of Nebraska, with the Douglas County, and all of the city various departments, the planning department, Public Works, Finance, Law Department. There's a lot of moving parts to our project. We really appreciate all of the combined efforts. We have secured over $17 million collectively from the state of Nebraska through our collective efforts. The... time, and the representatives from the Fire Ridge neighborhood, which is immediately to the west of our project, also spoke to the same comment. We're still working, I think, I don't think there's been any final resolution of that issue. There's a street connection on the west side of our project where Farnham Street, this is actually Farnham Street through the Fire Ridge neighborhood, connects to what becomes Harney Street. Farnham Street does not continue through. The rec report requests that instead of this intersection, essentially it being a T-intersection, that this Farnham section be continued as straight through and then kind of weave over to connect to Harney Street. The neighborhood is, again, I'm not here to speak with them, but we have talked to them to see if they still have the same position on this issue. They're strongly opposed to, they don't have any problem with the connection itself, it's just the, they do not want the change in configuration to the straight-through street. They think that will create a traffic issue for them, and that from a speed perspective, that it will allow the traffic to continue through their neighborhood at a higher rate of speed. It also is probably not the best thing for our subdivision, as we lose a little bit of ground here in the corner, and we think functionally, anyway, that that street works just fine. But again, that's not being final-platted today. It's not going to be, we're going to just talk about it and continue discussions with planning and Public Works on that issue. But otherwise, we are certainly in favor of moving on with our final plat on our first project. So with that comment, I promised everybody I would, in the back there, that with the R and R team, that I'd try and be brief here, so we'd be happy to answer any questions and appreciate the support and approval from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions from the board? Eric, may we hear from the city?
Sure. Yeah, there has been a lot of coordination with all parties for several years now, I should say. You know, obviously, there's a lot of information in the recommendation report. I'm not going to go into any of those unless you have any specific questions. Just to touch briefly on what condition number six that Jim brought up, you know, we're obviously willing to meet with them. You know, one of the challenges is Harney Street is the half-mile, you know, connection at one hundred and ninety-second, and that serves as one of the primary east-west, three-through routes that the master plan calls for. So we'll obviously meet with them. It is in a future phase. You know, outside of that, there'll just be further coordination on specifics of the mixed-use plan, you know, subdivision agreement, planning parks, Public Works. We'll continue to work with the applicant in making sure that everything gets firmed up and get the first phase, final plat sent off to city council, hopefully sometime in the future. So I'll read the recommendation. If you have any questions for me on any of the items in the report, please let me know. City recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and MU, subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement prior to forwarding the request to city council. Approval of the revised preliminary plat, subject to the thirty-three conditions listed in the recommendation report, and approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of revised preliminary plat approval relative to Phase One, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to city council for final action.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the of rezoning from AG to DR and MU, subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement prior to forwarding the request to city council, subject to, and approval of the revised preliminary plat, subject to the thirty-three conditions outlined in the department's recommendation report, and approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of the revised preliminary plat approval relative to Phase One, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request on to city council for final action.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Sure. Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thanks, Jim. Agenda item number eighteen, KC ten dash seventeen dash one twenty-nine, C twelve dash seventeen dash one thirty. Applicant Fountain Two LLC, request revised preliminary plat approval of Fountain Ridge West, formerly Office Development at Avenue One, a subdivision outside the city limits, with rezoning from AG to DR and MU, and final plat approval of Fountain Ridge West, Lot One and Outlots A through C, a subdivision outside the city limits, with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. And final plat approval of Fountain Ridge West, Lot One and Outlots A through C, a subdivision outside the city limits, with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. Location, two forty South one ninety-second Street. Larry, representing the applicant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Larry Jobin, one hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me today from Des Moines, Iowa, is Tom Rufrack and Steve Gare, who are part of R and R Realty. And so, sorry for them, they had to witness a five-hour meeting, but that's the way it goes sometimes. Now they understand what we go through every month. In any event, I want to echo the sentiment of Jim Boozer, because there has been a tremendous amount of coordination with the city and with all parties with respect to this project. It's an enormous-sized project. It encompasses both sides of one hundred and ninety-second Street. It's a monster of a project with a lot of moving parts, so it's been interesting. I think we've made a lot of strides here in the last year or so to get this thing across the finish line. So I'll just show you here what we have. This is, this is really a mixed-use development. Now, this is the eighteen acres on the west side of one hundred and ninety-second Street, so it's the northwest corner of the HWS Cleveland and one hundred and ninety-second Street. So again, this is eighteen acres. You're going to see in another month or so, there's forty-five acres that R and R owns on the east side of one hundred and ninety-second Street that will be coming before you, that's also an office park. That will be in the next month or two, so that'll catch up with everything here. So this is conceptual in nature. I think what we're showing here is about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet of office space. It actually could go up as high as two hundred and forty thousand square feet of office space. Again, this was kind of a placeholder, if you will, until we get, you know, end-users and, you know, there may be minor amendments to the mixed-use development agreement like typical. But what's actually being platted today is just Lot One and the three outlots that are shown on the plat. The recommendation report, we find the same acceptable. There is one issue with respect to item number three. There's a, we're showing a ride-in, ride-out at this location on HWS Cleveland, and the Public Works Department has asked that we remove that. There was some talk about, at one point, there was an end-user that might have an emergency access. For example, that would have been appropriate, I think, if it was for emergency vehicles, you know, only. We are, would like to at least reserve the ability to work with Public Works to potentially have a design here that makes that ride-in, ride-out work at this particular location, just because the, you know, sheer amount of the square footage of office space coming off of this street, which I should also mention, we're showing this as Outlot B at this point. And the only reason why we're doing that is because it's not fixed at this point. Eventually, we believe that this will be a public street, will be publicly dedicated, but for now, so we can adjust it depending on what the end-use is with respect to this mixed-use development, we'll be able to modify it and move it a lot simpler without coming back to the planning board and council every time the roadway gets adjusted. There's also a public street here, one hundred and ninety-fifth Street. So we do have two public streets coming in here, but there is a tremendous amount of office space. There's also, if you saw from Jim's prior preliminary plat, there's some property up here that would potentially be office uses as well. And so there's just going to be a tremendous amount of traffic coming up one hundred and ninety-third and one hundred and ninety-fifth. And to the extent we can design something that is acceptable to Public Works, we would just like to make that comment. So other than that, we find the recommendation report acceptable, and we're here for any questions that you may have.
Just curiosity, I should ask Jim those too, but what's the timeline for all of this to start occurring, from the improvements to the one hundred and ninety-second and Dodge interchange to the golden vertical? What's kind of the timeline?
Yesterday?
Been a long time.
It's been a long time. No, I think the idea is to really start seeing construction this year. As far as the interchange, I think that is, that's out there a ways. Yeah, twenty twenty-four, as far as the actual interchange. I think they're even calling for, you know how there's kind of a dedicated lane between one hundred and eightieth and one hundred and sixty-eighth Street? I think they're calling for the same thing between one hundred and ninety-second and one hundred and eighty. So that's, it's a large, large project. So, and there's a diverging diamond configuration, so it's going to be a pretty enormous project from a state highway perspective. So I think that's twenty twenty-four. One hundred and ninety-second Street will be started soon, hopefully this year. HWS Cleveland, Burke on the east side street, will be started this year as well. So the idea is to really get this going.
So the interchange doesn't have to be completed prior to?
No, uh-uh. It's a state project, highway project, yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks.
Before we move on, I just wanted to say that it may look like we're maybe not giving these large projects their due diligence, but we've been talking about these for a few years, so we're...
Four or five on this one, I think.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions? May we hear from the city?
Well, and nor will it be the last time we discuss.
Yeah.
Don't have anything specific to point out. There's a lot of crossover between the two reports, coordinate with each other, coordinate with the city. You know, so unless you had any specific questions, I don't need to point anything out specifically. City recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and MU, subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement prior to forwarding the request to city council. Approval of the revised preliminary plat, subject to the seventeen conditions in the recommendation report. Approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of revised preliminary plat approval relative to Phase One, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to city council for final action.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make motion for approval of the rezoning from AG to DR and MU, subject to submittal of an acceptable mixed-use development agreement prior to forwarding the request to the city council. Approval of the revised preliminary plat, subject to the seventeen conditions in the staff recommendation, and approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of revised preliminary plat approval relative to Phase One, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to the city council for final action.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thanks, Jim. Agenda item number eighteen, KC ten dash seventeen dash one twenty-nine, C twelve dash seventeen dash one thirty. Applicant Fountain Two LLC, request revised preliminary plat approval of Fountain Ridge West, formerly Office Development at Avenue One, a subdivision outside the city limits, with rezoning from AG to DR and MU, and final plat approval of Fountain Ridge West, Lot One and Outlots A through C, a subdivision outside the city limits, with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. Location, two forty South one ninety-second Street. Larry, representing the applicant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Larry Jobin, one hundred and fourteen forty West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me today from Des Moines, Iowa, is Tom Rufrack and Steve Gare, who are part of R and R Realty. And so, sorry for them, they had to witness a five-hour meeting, but that's the way it goes sometimes. Now they understand what we go through every month. In any event, I want to echo the sentiment of Jim Boozer, because there has been a tremendous amount of coordination with the city and with all parties with respect to this project. It's an enormous-sized project. It encompasses both sides of one hundred and ninety-second Street. It's a monster of a project with a lot of moving parts, so it's been interesting. I think we've made a lot of strides here in the last year or so to get this thing across the finish line. So I'll just show you here what we have. This is, this is really a mixed-use development. Now, this is the eighteen acres on the west side of one hundred and ninety-second Street, so it's the northwest corner of the HWS Cleveland and one hundred and ninety-second Street. So again, this is eighteen acres. You're going to see in another month or so, there's forty-five acres that R and R owns on the east side of one hundred and ninety-second Street that will be coming before you, that's also an office park. That will be in the next month or two, so that'll catch up with everything here. So this is conceptual in nature. I think what we're showing here is about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet of office space. It actually could go up as high as two hundred and forty thousand square feet of office space. Again, this was kind of a placeholder, if you will, until we get, you know, end-users and, you know, there may be minor amendments to the mixed-use development agreement like typical. But what's actually being platted today is just Lot One and the three outlots that are shown on the plat. The recommendation report, we find the same acceptable. There is one issue with respect to item number three. There's a, we're showing a ride-in, ride-out at this location on HWS Cleveland, and the Public Works Department has asked that we remove that. There was some talk about, at one point, there was an end-user that might have an emergency access. For example, that would have been appropriate, I think, if it was for emergency vehicles, you know, only. We are, would like to at least reserve the ability to work with Public Works to potentially have a design here that makes that ride-in, ride-out work at this particular location, just because the, you know, sheer amount of the square footage of office space coming off of this street, which I should also mention, we're showing this as Outlot B at this point. And the only reason why we're doing that is because it's not fixed at this point. Eventually, we believe that this will be a public street, will be publicly dedicated, but for now, so we can adjust it depending on what the end-use is with respect to this mixed-use development, we'll be able to modify it and move it a lot simpler without coming back to the planning board and council every time the roadway gets adjusted. There's also a public street here, one hundred and ninety-fifth Street. So we do have two public streets coming in here, but there is a tremendous amount of office space. There's also, if you saw from Jim's prior preliminary plat, there's some property up here that would potentially be office uses as well. And so there's just going to be a tremendous amount of traffic coming up one hundred and ninety-third and one hundred and ninety-fifth. And to the extent we can design something that is acceptable to Public Works, we would just like to make that comment. So other than that, we find the recommendation report acceptable, and we're here for any questions that you may have.
Just curiosity, I should ask Jim those too, but what's the timeline for all of this to start occurring, from the improvements to the one hundred and ninety-second and Dodge interchange to the golden vertical? What's kind of the timeline?
Yesterday?
Been a long time.
It's been a long time. No, I think the idea is to really start seeing construction this year. As far as the interchange, I think that is, that's out there a ways. Yeah, twenty twenty-four, as far as the actual interchange. I think they're even calling for, you know how there's kind of a dedicated lane between one hundred and eightieth and one hundred and sixty-eighth Street? I think they're calling for the same thing between one hundred and ninety-second and one hundred and eighty. So that's, it's a large, large project. So, and there's a diverging diamond configuration, so it's going to be a pretty enormous project from a state highway perspective. So I think that's twenty twenty-four. One hundred and ninety-second Street will be started soon, hopefully this year. HWS Cleveland, Burke on the east side street, will be started this year as well. So the idea is to really get this going.
So the interchange doesn't have to be completed prior to?
No, uh-uh. It's a state project, highway project, yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks.
Before we move on, I just wanted to say that it may look like we're maybe not giving these large projects their due diligence, but we've been talking about these for a few years, so we're...
Four or five on this one, I think.
Yeah.
Creek Replat 21, a minor plat outside the city limits with rezoning from DR to DR and R4. Portions of the property are located within the Flood Fringe Overlay District. Location, south of 130th Street and Deer Creek Drive. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Evening, Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, with me is Tim Halpine, is the GM of Deer Creek. This is a three-lot plat, minor plat, to add a couple lots to hole 12 on the original back nine out at Deer Creek. It's our understanding there is some opposition here to Lot Three and with, after some discussion with the homeowners adjacent to us, we've agreed to remove that lot from this plat. And so this, this lot will go away and we will come back and final plat this lot for the golf course and just Lot One. So we'll just be, come back with a two-lot plat with our final plat on the city council. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions from the board? May we hear from the city?
Sure. The proposed change to remove Lot Three would be acceptable to planning department staff. We would just need some, some of the revised documents before it went down to city council. So the final signed milars and any other documentation would accurately reflect that. A minor amendment will be required to the existing special use permit for the outdoor sports and recreation, the golf course use prior to the final plat going forward. And I also want to mention just a portion of Lot Two is, is located within the Flood Fringe Overlay District, so all development must comply with the floodplain development regulations. I believe there was a letter-of-map amendment that removed most of these lots out of that, so that could always be an option as well. The city recommends approval of the rezoning from DR to R4. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the two conditions in the recommendation report. Approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement if necessary.
Okay, do we have a motion?
A motion for approval of the rezoning from DR to R4. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the two conditions in the recommendation report and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, we have the minutes from, the December meeting minutes. Do we have a motion and a second? Lisa, will you record the votes?
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
A motion to go to the Creighton game?
Well, no, we have a election of officers. Do we have a motion for chairman?
A motion to elect you as chairman, the, Mr. Rosenbaum?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Do we have a motion for vice chair?
Motion for Chris Carr as for vice chair. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Aye, aye, aye. Is that what I got out of that? A motion to adjourn at 5:27.